Welcome to Tuesday, November 26, Pittsburgh Planning Board meeting. It is 6:01 PM. Before we begin, I'm just going to read a brief opening statement. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand, and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. One, state your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. Three, the Planning Board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. None. All right. First item this evening is going to just take a roll call vote for attendees. Please just state if you're here. Amanda?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Allyn?
Here.
Paula? Here.
Just for the record, the meeting opened at 6:01.
Yes, I said that.
Oh, you did? Sorry?
I did.
Didn't hear it?
Perfect. And Allyn is virtual. Our first item this evening, we do not have any approval not required plans, A and R plans. Our second title is minor site plans for which we have none, and we are going to slide right into our public hearings this evening. First on our agenda is site plan review for Brian Roberti proposing replacing of a greenhouse of a larger footprint for an existing farm and stand business located at Zero Asprey State Road in the RR district. Brian, if you want to either sit or stand, whichever you like.
Thank you. Brian, for the record, Brian Roberti, Carriage Shed representing 27 years, Farm Stand Nursery, Zero Asprey State Road, and what you said, trying to put up a new greenhouse.
So what we have here is a parking plan for the greenhouse. The greenhouse is depicted on the plan as well as the...
Yes. I was here on October 22nd for an informal meeting in front of you guys, and thank you for your time and for all the advice and information you gave me. I took what you said in consideration, and I... We put it together on another plan, had the surveyor come by and do another plan for what we did. I have a new revised plan. It shows the active parking in the front with the proposed gravel driveway going out to the rear with an additional 1, 2, 3, 4, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 parking spaces in the back. So that's what I have for the meeting tonight.
And just for the record, any employees other than yourself?
No, that's just me, self-employed.
And you park next door because, you know, as in a...
Yes, on the property next to me, yes.
Okay. And how many visitors do you normally routinely have at the site at one time, like customers for...
Maybe three, maybe, three at once.
What are your normal, like, operating hours?
Well, back before COVID, it used to be 8 till 6, but now after COVID, things change. It's when the gates open, the flag is flying, and I'm there. Dad's now dead for 10 years. My dog, who is my right-hand partner, she's also been dead now for nine, so it's just me, family-run business. So it's pretty much, like I said, when the gates open and the flag is flying, I'm there. So there's no set hours. I'm seasonal. I don't do the Christmas season anymore, so after pumpkins, I close. If the season's well, we open in March, but it's usually been April 1st to Columbus Day is when I usually will close the stand down.
Okay. And then I also see, like, maybe like two parking spaces. You have a gate out front. Is there a gate?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, is there a gate? It looks like, is there a gate or a bar?
Yes, there's a gate that I do slide across the front.
Okay.
A pipe gate, which is depicted on the map of the site plan.
It might be helpful. I have photos that I took when Brian and I met. It might give the board...
There's an existing bar gate there.
Well, no, I have photos of the site. I might not have a picture of actually that, but I just think it might be helpful if we go through the site very quickly. I'll share my screen on the photos and walk you through them. Brian, certainly, it's your site, so feel free to jump in.
Sure.
But this is the entry sign. He had an entry planting there. This is on, if you're looking at his site on the far right-hand side, then we have... So actually, you could see, I believe, that on the right-hand side near the flagpole is where that pipe gate goes in, that little...
It slides across.
So that's where it comes across to the front there.
And there's a pin in the middle, and the other pipe goes on the other... And the other pipe goes on the other side.
Yep.
So it connects to the middle.
Is that for, like, when you're done for the season?
No, every night I do lock it up, so there is nobody coming through the yard and, I guess, preventative maintenance, so nobody comes in and diddles around the property or steals, I guess.
Okay.
So this is standing in the parking, in the parking lot, looking towards Route 31, towards Ashby State Road. This was the picture Brian had provided to me that was kind of a, just the right-hand side, a rough approximation of what the proposed greenhouse is going to look like. Correct, Brian?
Correct. The top of the roof has got the polycarbonate. The roof is going to open up where that one isn't. And down below, where the roof is what the polycarbonate is, it would also be down on the sidewalls, so it will not be an open concept. But there will be obviously an eight-foot door in the front, eight-foot door sliding in the back and the rear, and it would be 30 feet longer than my old building, because my old building is on the plan that I have, that you have, shows it depicted as 25 feet wide by 50 feet long. The new one is going to be 24 feet wide, so one foot narrower with 84 feet long, which would make it 30 feet longer. So yes, predominantly, that would what the building looks like.
And this is the front of the old building, the part that he kept up, and the building used to go straight back from there, what the prior greenhouse was?
Correct.
Are you keeping that piece?
No, that is coming down. I just wanted to leave that so I had an existing footprint of an old building, because if I tore down that, I would have no leg to stand on, because I've been going through a lot of hurdles to put this building up. It's been over a year now, and I might not have the building, unfortunately, in the spring when I'm going to need it, because it took so long to do this.
And this is the middle planting area. It's shown on that site plan, which I just had up on the screen a minute ago. The building to the left is the main sales area.
Correct.
I don't know what you call it, but...
Office.
Yeah, your office area.
Yeah.
And this is a better picture, planting to the right, office there, and then the greenhouse on the left. And this is the gravel drive that's going to go to the, what has the overflow parking shown on that site plan. This is basically the frontage area off of 31.
So you can't, all right, you can't drive around that island as you're just parked on the side?
Yes, no, I don't want people to... You can't drive, because I did that well. I've been there 27 years, and once I had it, and people get scary, and they come driving right up to the building, almost coming into the building. So I have it now with the island, so now they cannot drive around. And I got tables with plants, so I have it sectioned off, so they can't drive around. However, what Paul said is correct. With the access gravel road depicting what you just saw, can go out there, and we'll do an additional five parking spaces. There's plenty of land, so you can turn around at ease and then turn back onto Route 31, so you're not backing up on the road. So it makes it, you know, kind of convenient, actually, and safe.
Yeah, this whole rear area to the left of that overflow parking, just to the right of the, what was the existing greenhouse, the location of the new greenhouse is open. It's open and cleared.
And as it's gravel, you're just going to put some, like, concrete curb stops?
I'm thinking railroad ties, to be quite honest, because I'm natural up there, and I do everything green. Like, I don't have any waste. Everything I do is a green industry, so I recycle. I sold, like I said, I've been a farm stand nursery 27 years, dealing with the city. Unfortunately, this year, they did not provide any business for me, but that's another talk show. That being said, everything's green, so I sell, you know, tomatoes, corn, farm stand, mulch in bulk. I don't sell bags predominantly anymore, because we don't want plastic. And everything I have from my plants that I don't sell will go into a compost pile, and I use it for compost, so... And the plastic pails will go back to the wholesale yard. So everything is reused, reused, and it's all green.
Okay.
So I don't have predominantly no trash.
So there'll be, it's a curb stop?
Um, yes.
Yeah, a railroad tie.
Yeah, the railroad ties would be sectioning it off, so as you can see where the additional parking is on that plan, in the plan in front of me, it would show the railroad ties, and then every nine feet in between each one would have it sectioned off, you know, and we do it that way.
Will you be adding parking signs, like, towards the front that says parking in the rear?
I would put on the fence, on the guardrail, excuse me, yes, correct, I'd have a sign with an arrow that would say, you know, parking in the rear.
Okay.
So they could see that.
So that's not on the plan, so we'll just say they can add the sign about...
Yeah, no, I did not put that in the plan. No, I did not.
I just wanted to show, to help kind of the visualization. This is the aerial of the site. So the gravel drive comes in here around, the parking would be here, and then there's a big area where you can maneuver and turn around if you...
Right, and it goes way out to where, way out in the back where the mulch is.
Right.
So you can go all the way out through there and turn around.
I don't want to confuse it too much. That's the other site. That's your other...
Yes.
You own that property, I know that.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, you got air... The whole point was you have plenty of area around here.
I guess the only other I would make is, I see that there's like two stacked parkings in the front, but I don't think that's necessary, because the depth from the roadway is so great that you're not backing out into the roadway, and I think there was two, like, typically go side by side, not in the gravel driveway? Could still fit two cars in the front.
Actually, he has it on the new map on the plot plan. It's showing four in the front, even though I could put five, but he went to do four in the active parking...
I don't see it.
To the right.
You're talking about in the back?
Oh, in the back.
Yeah, I'm talking in the front. See, the two there, they look like stacked right against, right in between your island and the office, so I don't think you're in... I know, one car would park there, but I don't know if someone would park behind somebody else.
Again, he has depicted with the nine feet for every one. He has four, but with the opening, you could put five, but he ended up putting four in the front with the additional five in the rear, making it nine.
Can I make it somewhat...
Go ahead, because I don't understand.
Can I make it somewhat simple?
I just don't want to approve it with that. I just want to make a statement.
I understand what you're saying.
But there's enough.
I understand what you're saying. If we just have him scratch out these two spaces in the front?
Yes.
Not to say, not to say if someone pulls up, they might not pull up there anyway, but what Paul is saying is, if we're approving the site, and I know when we met, I told you this, that the issue with any parking in front of that or next to that planning area is, you don't want to encourage your site plan people backing out, especially because it's a state highway.
Correct.
So I think you, I think you have plenty of parking in the back. It looks good the way they drew it, have absolutely no problem with it. The front one, especially because they're stacked, we'll just, you can even just cross them out and X them out, and then we can approve the site plan with just the parking in the back.
Okay.
Meaning, if someone pulls up and they park, like where that red car was in the photo that I had up a minute ago, I'm sure that's fine. It's just, we want to approve a site plan that shows you have plenty of parking in the back, not near the street, and that they don't have to back out.
Okay.
So for the purpose of what we're doing, we just don't, we don't want to encourage people backing out onto 31 because it's a state road. And that's part, that's the whole reason why we talked about drafting those spots in the back, was to make sure that you have plenty of room for that. So, you know, like I said, I don't think you need, necessarily need your engineer to do it, but if we can cross them out or make a note saying, you know, not parking, whatever the case would be, just so the official parking plan is, you park in the back.
I mean, I could also, like, I mean, I have my flowers in the front. I could also put, you know, like, you know, shrubs and big bulbs.
I don't think you need to do anything. Just, we, so, all I'm talking about was what's on paper, Brian, not what you're going to do in real life. What's on paper is, we want to show that the board is, you're demonstrating that you have plenty of parking in the back, near your new greenhouse, which, like you and I talked about, I think anyone that goes to the greenhouse that's going to pick up, you know, heavy materials or pumpkins or whatever, they're going to want to park near the greenhouse anyway.
You don't want to direct people to park there, but if you want to put landscaping there, things of that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, you know, definitely, I have flowers on the front. I can have tables, wooden tables, or planters there, so they couldn't drive around and...
Add people's attention to stop.
I'm sorry?
Add more things that catch people's attention to stop.
Sure, no, no. You know, 27 years, knock on wood, you know, God willing, I never had an accident there, so things, you know, have been good.
Yeah.
So, you know...
So you've gone, you addressed any of CONCOM's issues with the site plan?
Yeah, I went to Conservation Wetland Committee. That was approved 5 to 0. I went to the zoning board twice. Why, I didn't know, but I did, and that got approved again twice, 5 to 0.
Okay.
I got a building permit issued on October 1st in front of me, which, it said, go to Conservation Wetland Committee, which I did, and like I said, it got approved 5 to 0, and go to the Planning Board, which I came here on October...
22nd.
22nd for an informal meeting, and we discussed what our plans were, and I tried to be forthcoming and show you what we're doing. So that being said, I did what I had to do, but like I said, I also have the building permit issued to me right in my hand, but it said to go to Conservation, which check I did, and now to the Planning Board. And again, that's the best I can show you. I have more land than buildings. You know, again, that's not for us to discuss, because this would be an assessors issue. I have no building, and I'm still paying my taxes, which I did November 1st, on a building I don't have, but that's got nothing to do with the Planning Board. So that's another issue I got to address, because I'm probably not going to have my building up in the spring, so it's going to actually hurt me, because again, this is, to me, taking on that long.
I'm going to take some public comment.
Sure.
First of all, any board members have any questions or comments on the...
We're all set.
Okay. Allyn?
I'm all set.
You're all set? Okay. Any other department feedback? Chantel? On the site plan?
Did not get any department feedback on this.
Okay. And is there anybody in the... Oh, yes, okay. Mary Jo Bohart from our Economic Community Development Director.
Just very briefly, Mary Jo Bohart, Economic Development Director, and I've been working on and off with Mr. Roberti as he's navigated through the various local approvals, and so just wanted to say, I'm sure he's quite relieved to have come to this point with a site plan review. And also, I just wanted to reassure the Planning Board that I did reach out to both DPW and Mastiot relative to just Ashby State Road. And I just wanted to reassure you that the question for them was, you know, are they comfortable with the driveway width as it is? And they were. And basically, the fact that what he's doing isn't going to increase the intensity of his use with this business, it's simply a replacement greenhouse. So anyway, I just wanted to reassure you, we checked those different folks regarding the driveway.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. That being said, if there's no further public comment, does everybody think they have enough info?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is a motion made to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor with a second, say aye. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Oh, can I vote on this? I wasn't here at the last.
We didn't, the last meeting wasn't, it was preliminary. This is the first one.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. All right, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for Brian Roberti, Zero Ashby State Road, subject to the one condition that we cross out the parking spaces shown in the front of the building to the right of the landscaped circular area, and the designated parking as shown to the rear of the site is adequate.
Also, just add that there'll be curb stops on the parking to the rear, and also addition of a signage about parking at the rear.
That's fine.
Second.
I'll add that.
Okay. A motion was made with a second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. 6:0.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Yes, have a good Thanksgiving, and thank you for your time.
You too, Ryan.
Our next item this evening is special permit and site plan review, AG Dreamflip, proposing to build multifamily development of seven units. One single, oh, I know, this has changed. The site is...
No, they can't hear you.
I can't hear anything.
Oh. Is this better?
We start streaking.
Okay. Well, our second item this evening is AG Dreamflip, proposing to build a multifamily development of seven units located at Zero Fairmont Street. This is continued from our last meeting. It's been continued for, I don't know, about six months.
Also, if anyone is having problems hearing, we have hearing devices over there. Feel free to use them. They're for anyone that needs them. You can, it's just a...
It's just me.
It's just a thing to turn them on.
Speaking to the microphone.
Yep. Yep.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right. For the record, Chris Anderson with Hanning Engineering, here on behalf of AG Dreamflip, relative to a special permit filing. Acknowledge that it's been a while since we've been for the board. We've been working through conservation concerns relative to the overall project. Just to give a little brief overview, Conservation requested a peer review of the property's wetland delineation. We performed that, but unfortunately, we hit prime time vacation season, so there was a difficulty of trying to nail down everybody to be on site at the same time. So at this point, we've resubmitted plans, revisions, and everything like that relative to the overall submittal. We're working with Conservation through a couple of their concerns, and we're anticipating getting that resolved before we come back before the board, but just wanted to let the board know, we're not ignoring you, we're not delaying the project on purpose, it's just trying to get through all the steps and iterations that we need to with Conservation. So with that being said, if there's any questions from the board specifically, I can address them, but at this point, I think we're requesting a continuance, ideally to the January meeting, because we are working through a couple of things with Conservation, so...
Yeah, we have short notice for our December meeting anyways. Next week is the deadline, so I was going to suggest January. I did mention, I already mentioned it to Chris, my one suggestion, given that it's been so long, and particularly to be fair to the abutters, I would request that the applicant stop in at some point in December to the planning office and pay for the notification so we can re-notify abutters for the January meeting. I think that that's, I think that that makes sense at this point. We've continued, it's been continued so many times, it's not fair to expect people to know that it's going to be on our January agenda.
Understood.
And I forwarded some comments.
I did send those. We'll wrap them up with Conservation comments.
Okay. And also, just for everybody, I was asking for the building elevations and color scheme, dumpster, snow storage, lighting, landscaping, and things of that nature, have that all ready for the, when...
Yep, I know we have...
Meeting when you're ready.
And stuff like that, so we'll...
I know you got to figure out your logistics before you put it all down. Okay.
Sometime between now and January 2. I know the Ward 2 Councilor approached me a couple of times about just general comments. I saw the CONCOM meeting that Bill had been in contact with him too, so you might want to just touch base with him just to iron out whatever questions he might have.
Yep.
And I know, if you're going back to CONCOM at all, I guess I still would like to reiterate that you need some type of fencing or barrier from Depot Street over to prevent people from actually going into that area?
Correct. As part of our plan revisions, just to give the board a heads up, we are putting the boulders along the road as well as a chain link fence, brand-new one, so that's, that area is effectively quartered off except for a mangate to perform maintenance on drainage infrastructure back there.
Okay.
But that is in the works. We are...
Okay, good.
Before I forget, not important for CONCOM, but if it is chain link, just make it the black vinyl coated chain link. It looks a little bit better. And I understand it's chain link, because it's going to wear better there, because it's not a heavily trafficked area, so normally say vinyl, but there, I understand. But we'll, we'll get to that when we get to that. Just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yes.
All right.
I'll make a motion to continue to January.
A motion's been made. And a second to continue to our January meeting. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
6:0.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Brian.
Yes, have a good Thanksgiving, and thank you for your time.
You too, Ryan.
Our next item this evening is special permit and site plan review, KCMC Management, proposing to demolish and reconstruct a fast food restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts, located at 125 Main Street. Continued from our October meeting. Well, hello again.
Hello. All right. Just again, for the record, Chris Anderson with Hanning Engineering, here on behalf of KCMC Management, for a site plan review and special permit for a drive-through restaurant. We were before the board last meeting, or a meeting or so ago now. I apologize, I forget. At that meeting, we did receive various comments from the board relative to improvements to the site to accommodate more pedestrian-focused use in some component of the site. Just to refamiliarize everybody, we have Main Street that runs along the bottom portion of the page with North Street on the south side, or the west side. It's the intent to demolish the existing structure and construct a drive-through-only facility at the property. The general site layout has remained primarily intact compared to the original approval from 2022, modification being exclusively this conversion from a dine-in to a drive-through-only. As of the last meeting, we have incorporated a couple of comments and concerns. As of the last meeting, we have incorporated a couple of comments and concerns, specifically, we have shown the tables as well as the intended table that we're going to be installing on the property, due to concerns over vandalism, we are using a much more heavier-duty picnic table, if you will, so that doesn't get
I'm gonna pull it up, Chris, hold on a second.
Thank you. So that it doesn't get disturbed, for lack of a better term, so that's a standard outdoor patio set table system that is used elsewhere in the Dunkin's facility, or the applicant's other facilities, and has done pretty well so far. As you can see, that's just your generic concrete bench table combination.
You have a trash receptacle in that area?
We have added a trash receptacle to that area as well. So as you can see
Which is on the plan, this is the, this is the newly updated plan, it shows right on the corner of the building.
There it is.
Yep, right, right there.
Yep, so we're showing a total of four of the tables within the patio area along with the trash receptacle.
Chris, I'm counting three.
Three, yes.
Okay.
Did you, are you just putting, like, small plantings around for landscaping, or are you also putting in a, like
So there'll be a line of iron green shrubs between the fence, so on the patio, you have the patio, a fence, and then the shrub line.
Okay, you will have the, like, a black iron metal fence?
Yep. So in addition to that, it was requested that additional pedestrian access provided to North Street, so we have incorporated that as well with additional signage for pedestrian crossing to make vehicles aware that as they pull out of the drive-through window area, there is a potential pedestrian crossing in that area.
I appreciate you taking those comments in there because that, to me, looks like the, where the pedestrian flow is going to go, it's gonna either come down North Street, go right across, get it, and then leave going over to Main Street, or back up again, so it's, it's a nice flow because we're even coming from Main Street and then up too, so
Okay.
I appreciate you taking the time, and then I think one other comment I had is, we have, right in the landscaping on the corner of North and Main, it was just like, here's a triangle of removing curb, but there was just nothing
Correct, so I did take a look into that, the removing the curb was a remnant of the previous development because it's such a tight constraint, that's actually part of the right-of-way of the road, that little, that little corner, if you will, at the intersection with Main and North, so we can't really touch anything within there because there's signages and other stuff right there.
I think there's a tree in there right now.
Yes, it's part of this, that's the city's tree, that's not ours.
So what do you, is, what's being depicted here, there's, the tree is remaining, like, I can't, trying to project what's, what's
So we're not touching anything within the right-of-way of the road in that corner because it has signage and other city infrastructure, so effectively where that curb is in that area
Yeah.
That's the limit of the right-of-way, for lack
It's landscaping right now.
Correct.
Maybe we can ask DPW if it's okay to still maintain the landscaping in that corner? You're maintaining the landscaping in that corner.
If DPW's amendable as to maintaining that area, we
There just seems to be a vacant spot of like, what, that's gonna, and that's a main, I'll just say that's, that's a main viewing spot.
We'd probably take care of it anyways. So this is an image as of a month ago?
Yeah.
So you see how the corner kind of juts out?
Right, it made me think there's, you're taking the curbing out from this plan and the tree, but is that, so that, that tree is still remaining there with the mulch?
Yeah, if DPW's amendable to us maintaining that, I'd
I would say similar to, we had talked about the strip of land between you and the fire station, what the fire chief asked for, I would say similar to that, obviously, as you know, it's very common, we do commercial projects where, you know, if there's landscaping islands or circles, to have the abutting property want to take care of that because they don't get enough maintenance from the city to make them look okay, although I will say, I just pulled up the street scene, it actually looks pretty good on the street scene, but that might be because you guys are maintaining it now, I don't know, maybe we did, I don't know, you do?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so, so if we, you know, as long as we can keep it neat and tidy, then I think that's perfect.
Is that, is that appropriate, is the site distance okay with the tree there? Because of the light, has been, not been an issue?
Yeah, I presume that because of the light
I can't imagine, this tree, this tree on the sidewalk comes out even further than those do.
Well, yeah, but you're taking a corner, so it's a corner site, does
Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about turning from here?
Turning around, usually
There's a pretty big rounding there.
Yeah.
I was gonna say.
Okay, it hasn't been an issue, all right, so we'll put that in there about just maintaining the landscaping like it is to the north, is to the, to the corner. It's gonna be part of your, once you remove the curb, it's even gonna be, look like part of your landscaping.
So in addition to that
I think you can coordinate that it can be all grassed, I mean, however you, this is like a mulch spot, or if you think mulch is more appropriate, or whatever you
Grass would just burn out there on the sides of the island, we probably do have to keep it with the mulch. Yeah, especially with salt and
Okay.
And one other comment relative to the architecturals, I know there was concern relative to making the walk-up window a little bit more front, pedestrian-friendly, so there are canopies associated with the walk-up window now as well as
Like a little awning of some sort?
So we did provide the architectural plans, revisions, and also incorporated a menu board at the walk-up window as well, so we did incorporate that as well.
Is there any image available of what that opening would look like?
We did submit the architectural renderings.
Bear with me, I'll try and pull them up.
Yes.
Let's see, previous materials. No, that's not the right one. Was it in the submittal?
It was a, when we resubmitted the last plan, minus the other day, so it would've been
Maybe I missed it?
Yeah, did you send it to me too, Chris?
I don't think I did.
Okay, I don't think I have it.
Would've been done around the end of October.
Okay.
I got the plans, but I didn't see architectural plans.
The menu itself is basically one half of our drive-through menu board, it's, it's a single panel, it'll be adjacent to the drive, the walk-up window.
Okay.
But I think if we pull up the original architectural plans
Is that the last one? Yeah, I can do that.
The, the general look of the building hasn't changed, and I believe that, that plan set also had the canopy on it, I just was not aware of it at the previous meeting. There it is.
Hold on, let me, bear with me for one second, I gotta download this in order to flip it.
Thank you for your efforts, Paul, who's this?
More of it like I did printout copies.
I do.
So we got, new share, this, all right, and I can zoom in. Okay. And what are we looking for exactly?
So the general appearance of the prop, or the building hasn't changed, we did incorporate the window into it, I do have print-offs of that plan.
You can just pass them, give them to Peter and he can pass them down.
Thank you.
So the walk-up window, the first to upper left?
Correct, that would be the walk-up window, and to the left of it, as you're facing it, would be where the walk-up, or the menu board would actually be.
And so I see like the, that orange, like awning?
That would be the awning, yes.
And it similarly wraps around, it's in front of other windows on the
Correct, so it would
Order window and the drive-through window.
Yep.
Tracy, let me take a picture, I can get it right, I can get it right there. So which one do we want to see?
This one.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it looks any different than what's up on the screen.
It's, it's effectively the same, we just incorporated the walk-up window so it's documented, that it will be incorporated into the layout.
Okay.
There we go. So that was on the site plan dated October 25, 2024.
So that's the, you see it on the left-hand side, it says wall-mounted digital menu board?
Yep.
Okay.
Digital board.
Apologize for a little bit of blurriness.
Thanks, Paul.
All right.
Better than any of us could ever attempted, it'd be like, look, see, go hold it up to the camera, all right, any board members have any questions regarding this application? And address the question, the concerns that we had from the last meeting? And any other department comments further from?
I only received comments from Ryan from Engineering, and those are
I have them all.
In the front, yeah.
Yep.
So
Let's see, for this one. No, none for this one.
Okay, this is
I was just gonna say, just to reiterate, I know I mentioned it, but the fire chief did, did have that one comment, that the strip between the fire station and this property, they try and care for it, but they don't have the manpower, so they, they'd like to see, they were, they were asking if the applicant could, and I had suggested that it would be a good permit condition, that they maintain that landscaping strip, it's only a, maybe a four-foot strip between this property and the fire station.
No problem.
That being said also, I'd like to make, bring it to the board's attention if they're not aware of it yet, the, the state legislator recently issued a new bill as of last week, granting extensions for permits that were active between January 1 of '23 through January 1 of '25, so at this point, that special permit is in full force and effect as our expiration occurred in August of this past year, so it was active during the tolling period, that was House Bill 5100, specifically subsection 280, this just came to our attention.
Oh, and that just, and it passed?
Yeah.
You know, under what?
The governor issued it.
Just because, I'm just like, you know, before I was like COVID, I was just kind of like, what
So what I've been told from other parties is that effectively because of the nature of construction as of lately, it's been very difficult for contractors and developers to move things along, so they granted that two-year extension to allow that extra time. So at this point, the special permit is active, so we're just looking for a site plan modification or approval to reflect the drive-through-only facility.
Well, it got submitted as a brand-new site plan, we'll just look at it at that, we're gonna retire the last one, we're just
Correct.
Focusing on this one.
So modification probably is not the right word to you.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, we, we assumed the last one had expired, we started a new one, we're at the 11th, 11th hour on this, I think it's just move forward, it's easier.
Special permit, it's cleaner if we just do a new special permit.
Yep.
Chantel, if, while I'm thinking of it, because I might, if you can just make note of that and send it to Paul and I, so that we, because this is gonna affect every permit we have.
Yeah, well, I'll check with city council, legal council, okay?
Yeah, please.
Yes.
Because this is gonna come up a lot if that, that just happened.
Then one other request from the board, this project is very time-sensitive, so if any possibility of expediting the issuance of the permits could be done, it would be very greatly appreciated, we're against a lot of time constraints relative to getting the construction going and other various aspects of the site, so any effort that the board can do would be very greatly appreciated.
Can, I, Bill and I had talked about this, presumably you can demo without the permit, though?
We could technically demo right now, if the special permit, all special permit holds, that's, the use is protected, it would just be the site plan approval, which there's no technical appeal period.
Well, what I'm saying is if we actually make the motion today, and we vote on it today, and you know that the permit's coming, you, there's, the only chance you would have there is if someone appealed it.
And at that point, they would have to appeal the physical building permit.
Right, that's what I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is you could, I think you could start everything, even without that permanent hand.
Well, you're still subject to 20-day appeal once it does get filed, not just the building permit, but yeah.
So then we'd be, our business would be dormant for three weeks while we're waiting for the appeal period, we could be open. Right, that's why I'm saying, you start demo while you're waiting, and anyway, it's fine, my point was, I'm sure Chantel will work as quick as she can, but, but that's out of the board's control, so. But as far as that, I have no questions so far.
Public comment at this point, so do we see anybody here speak on this matter? And then anybody virtual?
I believe the only virtual member, oh no, there's four virtual, there's four people virtual. No, no hand raised.
No, no, but
I'm just letting you know, there's four people that I don't know.
Two of them are worth a name.
Perfect.
Okay.
There's one name I recognize, so, there's two names I recognize.
Okay. So I think, I believe we, probably the board has enough information
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made with a second to close the hearing, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye, discussion?
I think, I think the, you know, the, the major issues were ironed out, I certainly, I certainly understand, you know, why the project looks the way it does, and I think that the new building will be nice, and there is an ability to walk up to it, so, aside from the two things we talked about, maintaining the plantings within the right-of-way on the corner of North and Main, as well as the strip of land that the fire chief had suggested between the fire station and this, I didn't have any other permit conditions.
No, I think you addressed, the flow's been addressed adequately, landscaping looks good, and most importantly, that driveway to the intersection's gonna flow a lot better now, that's huge, so, that's, yeah, so that was very much appreciated to that, for that thing. Looks good, all right, that being said, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan for 125 Main Street, KCMC Management, subject to the, to the two conditions that I mentioned, the applicant to maintain and, maintain and take care of the plantings and landscaping area within the right-of-way of the corner of North and Main, that might involve, I know, I've, I'm thinking of this now, and I'm just gonna mention it, it might involve just a letter of understanding with the DPW, we, I know I've talked to Nick about that in the past, if it does, then maybe we can iron that out with them, but, and then the other thing was maintaining the strip of land to the rear between the fire station and this property.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sure that guy always do it. It's okay, all right, roll call, vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Allyn's loud and clear.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving. Right, we have, we did have on our agenda modification of our revolutionary clinics, but they're requesting to leave to withdraw because there's really nothing to modify at this point.
Right, I'll have them on other business for December.
Okay, so they asked to withdraw, so we can
I'll make a motion to give leave to withdraw.
Okay. A motion's been made with a second for leave to withdraw, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Without prejudice? Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye. We also have as next, special permit and site plan review for Ed McSweeney, Townsend Street Realty Trust, proposing a PUD of eight units at Zero Townsend Street, this, however, has been also requested to continue, I don't know if there's anybody here this evening for that, aside from, we got written requests to continue?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And let's continue to, is it safe, December meeting?
December.
I think he'll be ready for December, okay.
Yep.
Make a motion to continue, oh, we haven't opened it yet, I don't have to, right, I don't have to motion on that, we haven't
Well, let's see, it's here, I guess we can
Well, then you gotta open it
Move in it, otherwise, it's, otherwise Trying to think about that.
I mean, it involves a site plan, so if you want to open it and then continue it, we can do that, but I mean, we still, even with a site plan, we would, we need them to sign it.
Well, not, not the first off, but we get 90 days.
Okay, so do you want to just leave it as is, or do you want to open it and continue it?
We have 65 days in order to open it, let's just, let's open it.
Go ahead.
So we'll open that special permit site plan review and then vote to continue it to our December meeting.
I think if we open it, you should at least ask for public comments.
So is anybody here regarding? Yes, absolutely. Yes. Our December, December 17th meeting, the applicant's not here, he's, they're working through with the Conservation Commission, I believe, was in the note.
Correct.
You won't, so you won't, plan on being here?
Okay, plan on being at City Hall, third floor.
Yes.
Yep.
On December, on the 17th, we're gonna be upstairs.
6 o'clock on the 17th, third floor, City Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and, and, you know, if, if you know neighbors and you want to tell them, please, I, I think everyone got notice, but people, you're, I think the only one that came today, so if you know anyone that wants to come, tell them, third floor, City Hall. You got it.
Yes.
Make a motion to continue.
A motion's been made with a second to continue to our December meeting, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Hopefully I'll have better vocalization at that location. I know, I need to project, it's, it's been brought up in my college class.
I can give you some of mine.
Think about that. Hold on a second, Zero. All right, our next public hearing this evening, we have special permit and site plan review, props development
No, no, you skipped, you skipped
I skipped one.
You skipped Bill Oregon. Twenty, the one before McSweeney.
Did I skip one? Oh, why did I put that, sorry, I did skip it, I ended up, sorry, I took that out of order, special permit and site plan review, applicant Bill Oregon requests an extension for a permit granted for a 16-family, multifamily conversion of a building located at 633 Main Street in our in-town business zoning district, good evening, Bill.
Good evening, I'm just here for the, an extension for the special permit, I believe we're gonna probably need two years, but I think the project's gonna be done within a year, he just got all of his funding, and I've been tasked to get drawings done in the next month.
Oh, geez, so if, if you can, you probably know when the permit was going to expire?
I think December.
Okay, so we're thinking December 26, December 2026?
Two years.
Okay, so that's December, we'll do December 31st, 2026?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Also, we're going to investigate what this extension, permit extension act business is about, to see what that does to the timeframe as well.
I'm sorry.
No, see, he was talking about the, one of the other people, Chris Anderson from Hannigan was saying that apparently the governor passed a law saying that there's automatic extensions of some permits. We'll make this official by voting on it, but there might be some protections anyway from that.
Who knows when that?
Yes, exactly.
Just might change that.
We'll, we'll do the official on our end, so we don't have to worry about that.
Okay, yes.
Yep. And this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment? Any questions on the board?
No.
No? Is there anyone in the audience? Anybody virtual?
No hands raised.
Okay, that being said.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Discussion?
I'm good. I'll make a motion to extend the special permit and site plan, it says, for 633 Main Street, to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bill.
Emily, say you too.
Yeah, you too, Bill. Thank you, easy.
Yeah, I didn't know. This one was, yeah. Now, we have opening a hearing for special permit and site plan review applicant Props Development, proposing a multifamily development with the conversion of a vacant buildings, the second and third floor into eight residential units located at 329, 335 Main Street in our in-town business district.
Hello, everyone. For the record, my name is Nicholas Pelletier. You may know me from Pelletier Properties. I'm here tonight representing as majority owner of P Props Development, which owns 329 to 335 Main Street. You may know that as the current home of Tiki Tiki Chinese, and we have been working diligently for a while now, probably about a year, to come up with plans and funding for formal redevelopment of the vacant second and third floor. Paul, you could bring up those photos. That would be helpful.
You bet.
Just to visualize the property. So there's nothing above, it's been vacant for a very long time, and you may remember when the Crescent Building actually burned down, the fire actually jumped across Crescent Street and this property was part of that prior to our ownership. All of that structural development has been done in the past by a previous owner, so now we're looking to add eight residential units. We have plans to do a mix of studios and one bedrooms with one affordable unit, and we've been working, I should mention, sorry, one of my business partners is on, I believe, virtually, and also our architect, one of our architects is on virtually as well, so in case there's any questions, we do have other representatives on Zoom.
If you ever want me to unmute people, just tell me who to unmute.
Yeah, no, I think only if there's questions.
They're all one-bedroom?
So there's some, there's one studio, one or two studios, hold on, I just got to double-check that.
I guess we'll call that one-bedroom.
Yeah, they're all one-bedrooms, yeah. One-bedrooms are studios.
Okay, just for parking, calc, so.
Yep, yep, so they're all one-bedrooms or studios.
All right, you can tell me where you want me to go.
Yeah, so basically, you know, just to get a feel for the building, this is the front, and then actually, if you scroll down, you'll just see the back. Yeah, there's the back right there. So it's only, it's not, doesn't go obviously all the way to the drory building, it's just the yellow or tan windows, depending on how you describe it. And the two doors that you see, one, the gray door on the left and the door in the middle, those would both be staying. The doors on the right would be converted into windows for the unit that is there, and they would be made to match the existing windows with similar style.
So they wouldn't look like blank steel doors?
Correct. They would look like windows.
So we're talking about, you could see, I think, Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, that where the roof ends is the start of your building?
Correct.
Yep, so we're talking this building here.
What's actually strange about this building that most people don't know is the third floor is only half the building, so if you look at it from the front, it's a two-story building, and if you look at the back, it's a two-story building, but it's actually not the same two stories. It's kind of a strange design. This is what it looks like now. If you keep scrolling, it's just, I believe originally either office space, most likely, but it's been, as far as I know, unoccupied for decades. We did do a full environmental review in terms of asbestos. None was found. The asbestos contractor noted that everything was too old to have asbestos.
Fantastic.
Right over that.
Oh, the staircase, that.
Yeah, staircase is cool.
Were you able to, you think you'll be able to retain the stair, the original?
One concern is the height of the railing, so it's still TBD if there's a way that we could potentially add on to it, but the, the height currently would not pass code. But we're open to using the original posts if possible and maybe potentially raising the actual railing. And that just shows where in the downtown it is.
What we're talking about.
If you want to open up, maybe the architectural plans would be appropriate.
Yep.
So what you're going to see is primarily, the majority of the units are on the second floor looking from Main Street, the first floor looking from Crescent Street, and then there's two additional units on the third, second floor looking from Crescent Street. One of the other things you'll see in the plan, I had some questions about trash, we do have a centrally located trash room. Our plan is to have a trash service that actually enters the building to remove the trash, mainly because that's the only manageable option we can think of. We don't think it's manageable to have trash located outside and manage that properly, so we plan to have a centrally located trash room and a centrally located laundry room, both of which are in the floor plans.
Just a quick question on that.
Yeah.
Will the trash be picked up from Main Street or Crescent Street?
Crescent Street.
Crescent Street?
Yep. It's, if you go from Main Street, it would be going upstairs. If you go from Crescent Street, it would basically be on the same level.
Okay.
So if you scroll to the actual...
Do you, what do you, what do you want?
That one, yeah, there you go. Wait.
So this is the second floor, and then this is first floor commercial?
That's...
And this is basement floor plan?
That's not the right plan.
Okay.
That's not my building.
Oh. Six, 633 Main?
Nope, 329 to 335.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, we just did 633.
You're fine.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
That's all mine. I was going to say, that looks like a lot of units.
I got nervous for a second, I'm like, I don't see the trash room.
Sorry, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I just, we just had Bill, I just had on my mind. All right, so here we got drawings, yeah, okay.
Okay, that looks better.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so yeah, if you scroll in here, you're going to see...
So which one do you want? So I have...
So I don't believe that is the, hold on, can you scroll? That's not the most updated set.
Okay.
There was a revised set that I sent over.
There's a plot plan.
There was a revised set that I had sent you, Chantel.
Did you?
Yeah.
Did I miss it?
So the only, oh, okay, the only one...
I can send them to you if you want.
Just email it to me, Nick.
Yep. One second.
Yeah, because I got your narrative in the photos today, but that's what I have.
One second.
Oops.
Yeah, so we, we made some additions, particularly actually, one of the units originally was a two-bed, but we obviously revised that down for reasons that just make sense for the property, and then we added that trash room in the, or a larger trash room and the laundry room, as discussed, so I just want to make sure we have those drawings.
Is there any internal bike storage or?
There's not any current storage. Right now, the, the commercial space and the residential space are completely separate. There is no way to access the first floor commercial space up to the residential, so there's just not enough square footage for storage outside of one's unit. They are one-bedroom units, and they are pretty large for one-bedroom units, so my hope is people can store within their own square footage.
What's the approximate square footage?
One second, let me just...
I know, multitasking here.
It's okay, it's okay. I'm pretty good at multitasking, but I just want to get one thing done. Mike, if you're, if you can, if you're on and you can hear me, could you look up the square footage for me?
I can unmute him, too.
Thank you.
So I have two mics.
Mike Albert.
Mike Albert, yes. I just unmuted Mike.
Mike, if you could comment on square footage while I pull up the plans.
Yep, I'm right here, I'm right here. What are you, what are we looking for?
The approximate square footage of the redevelopment area.
Of the units?
Yep.
I have the unit count, the approximate square footage, hold on.
Or range?
Oh, it's, I mean, like, eight thousand square feet.
What is that?
You broke up a little bit there, we didn't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my phone's not in the best of places, but it's, it's small square footage, let me look it up, but we're at about like nine grand, nine thousand square feet total.
Nine thousand square feet total.
Okay, and then how much per you, per each unit? Like, what's the size of each unit, saying there's adequate space for storage in the unit?
The units are roughly around about 500 to 600 square feet.
Okay.
Some of them are a little smaller on the upper floors, but we're, we're roughly around 500 square foot.
Okay.
Okay, sending to you now, Paul.
Aside from the doors, are you looking at other external renovations?
So this is, this is a challenge right now, is, is to make the finances work on this property, it's, it's extremely tight. We're actually at a point where we have been working over a year to try to get the funding to make this work, and this, all of this is going to be contingent on getting H-Tip funding, which we need this before we can apply for. So the concept of doing additional exterior work is, is really out of scope in the ability to get the units finished at what the rent's going to be. One of the other challenges right now is, is two of our current storefronts are vacant, they've been listed for over 150 days without tenant applications. So the ability to do, particularly on the front side, obviously the backside, once those doors are fixed, it's going to look pretty standard. The front, I would love to do additional work, but it really is cost prohibitive until we have a solid commercial tenant on the first floor. And the, the actual square footage that we're doing residential, the brick and all that looks good. It's really the commercial storefronts, which down the road, we'd love to do some work on, but it's just cost prohibitive at the moment.
True. We have you in front of us this evening, so we'd like to know what your, what your potential plan or faith?
And so the reality is, if we were to do work there, the, the residential project won't happen. It's just not financially feasible unless there was funding to do it. At this point, we can't take out a loan of over a million dollars and, and the rents just don't, they don't support it, so.
Can we see a picture of the, back to the?
The, the existing ones?
Yeah.
Oh, the ones I already had?
Yeah, just, what is it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on, I just got to find where I put them. So that's the existing front?
Okay, can you zoom in a little bit?
Yeah.
I guess it's just, I mean, the brickwork looks fine.
Yeah, the brickwork looks great.
I mean, it's, it's not in terrible condition?
No.
But is that just, like, black gutter?
No, that could just be power washed.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, that could just be power washed, that wouldn't be a problem.
So we'll talk about power wash that, power wash the back?
That's fine.
You know, brick, it's just...
Yep, that's not a problem.
Clean up?
Yep. No, I agree with that 100%.
It's just, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, more extensive, obviously renovations is more what I meant.
It's like, we understand it was going to bring housing downtown, but everybody that drives by just sees this.
Yep.
It's like, so it's like, any visible improvement here to, to be made or?
And we've tried to maintain the graffiti as much as we can, you know, the properties on both sides of us have graffiti and, and we don't, so we're doing our best.
What are you doing for any type of heating, air conditioning?
They will all be mini splits.
Yes, we just don't want anything visible on the front.
They will all be on the roof.
Here, going to be on the roof, great, because we permitted the building right next to you with the same condition.
Okay, yep, all of the mini splits will be located on the roof.
Okay.
So Nick, this is the set you sent me?
Yep, that's the correct one, thank you. So you can see the, if you look at, how do I describe it? So, I'll just point.
So, that's the laundry room, and then the trash room.
Laundry?
Yeah, the trash breaks to the right, that closet to the right of laundry.
Oh, right, yep, the TR, yep.
Yep, so we'll have trash and recycling right there, which we picked up probably multiple times a week, just because of sanitary reasons, and then the laundry room right to the left of that. We were originally going to combine the spaces, but our architect made a good point that those two spaces should be likely separated.
Okay.
My only fear here is, should the special permit be granted and you're allowed to put the apartments above?
Mm-hmm.
And the apartments get rented?
Mm-hmm.
And the whole project starts to roll along and move forward? What is going to be your incentive to remodel and rehab the commercial spaces?
So-
My fear is, you're going to have, get a permit?
Yep.
There's going to be apartments in the building, then the commercial spaces are going to be overlooked, and they're going to remain looking like that for the remainder of time.
So one of the challenges is, as everyone knows in development, is that we need residents living on Main Street to support commercial units. So I can't force someone to open a business there. We have 25,000 in storefront activation funds, which the city has allocated to us if a tenant came along. As I said, I've had the spaces rented for lease.
Yep.
It's kind of a catch-22. You need the people living there to support the businesses.
Right.
Most of the people that know me know I won't let that happen.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be much more difficult, though, to rent a commercial space that is not attractive and it hasn't been rehabbed, as to one that's been rehabbed and looks great.
It depends on what the use is. So I can't rehab a space for a cocktail bar if someone wants to open a tattoo shop.
But you can do a facade. You can make the building look good.
I guess what would you change on the, I guess, what would you see would be beneficial to change on the exterior?
I couldn't, were you-
I says, see? Oh, look at this. I'm not projecting. I mentioned, what would you envision, like, on the exterior? I think there was just some sign boxes. There was a brick front, the windows, just below it.
So here's the, so the one thing I will say about this, I, I, I think that cleaning the exterior will do a lot. I think that, that the stretch is in somewhat disrepair, but this building from the exterior isn't terribly bad. The, with new signage, which the city has funds for, once new businesses go in, I think that would make it-
I agree 100%, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean-
I've tried to, I've tried to get the tenant to pursue those grants unsuccessfully so far.
Yeah. I mean, the only, the only thing that I don't like is this strip right here, the, above the-
I agree.
The main awning. I mean, I, I, aside from that, I think major facade improvements, aside from, like we said, cleaning.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to change the brick, you know. I, I don't, I don't know. I, I think, I don't disagree with Nick that, you know, that it could change with, you know, a new tenant there, and that could be part of, you know, some income, some, you know, short and long-term income from eight residential units. Meaning, you can start putting some of that money into the building, so.
No, I agree, the front does not need a lot. It's basically a good-looking building the way it is. You know, possibly changing signage and that kind of thing would really make it, make it a little more streamlined in the look.
Yeah, unfortunately, I've tried to work with the tenant regarding the grant funding from the city. I haven't made progress.
Are there two, two commercial units there?
There's three units. Only one is occupied.
Okay. Well, yeah. Depending on what you're looking at signage, and maybe that you do, you know, three uniform, like, sign boxes there across the top, and they pay, whenever you change your tenant, change out the signs.
So one of the challenges with the sign box on the right is that tree. In the summer, you wouldn't even see the sign box on the right.
And anything in the future, I would, I'll just point it out about, like, the chart, a minimizer, limit the current AC unit that's sticking?
Oh, yeah. So that, so, yes. That would actually be, so if a tenant, so the hope is, a tenant wants to move in, and we would transition that unit. So that has a, currently has a forced hot air heating system in it. So the concept would be to remove that AC and transition that over to a heat pump AC connected into the existing forced hot air system. So that AC would be gone.
It's right over the sign in the middle of the window. The middle of the building, there's a wall-
Right over my for lease sign.
I'm looking, I was like, I'm like, okay.
I can't stand the AC.
Yeah, I think it would be a permit condition that the AC unit be removed.
That's fine. Not a problem.
As we mentioned, no, nothing stick trying to-
Totally fine.
Make it uniform with the building. And is that an awning over the?
That is Tiki Tiki's awning, yep.
Yep, okay. Again, when you power wash, just probably just clean that up a little bit.
Yep.
Awning too. And then, lighting on the rear, what are you doing for light? Is a major access main, is residential side from Crescent Street?
It's really going to depend, right? So the parking envisioned is the parking, the parking garage diagonally across the street on Main Street. So the, the concept is to rent parking from, from the parking garage. So obviously, tenants coming from the parking garage would likely enter through the front of the building. I think it's somewhat unlikely that tenants would enter through Crescent Street, I guess depending on where they're going, or where they're coming from. I guess if someone's coming from Pittsburgh State, they may enter through Crescent Street. But if they're coming from anywhere on Main Street, they probably wouldn't walk around the back of the building. They'd probably take the stairs up. So there's a door on the front, there's a door right to the right, which allows you direct access up to the residential floors.
Which would be this door right here?
No, actually.
No, I'm sorry, right here. Sorry, I was looking at it the wrong way.
Correct.
Can you bring it back to the photos, and then look back at the rear? Only because the-
That red door.
Building next door that was permitted for housing on the exterior, they have some exterior doors, and they are going to be putting in some lighting by the door.
Sure.
Probably looking at something similar to make sure you've got some-
Not a problem.
Not, not just like a wall pack, but something that looks a little aesthetic.
Yeah. Yeah, not a problem. We could, we could definitely put lighting on both sides of the door of some historic nature.
Yes.
And I think because the building is attached to the Drury Building, and I don't have the plans handy, it might make sense to try and match them to what they're doing in the Drury Building.
I'm totally fine with that. And what's interesting is actually the buildings, I don't, I question whether buildings were built together. Obviously, if you look at the roofline and the trim on the windows, it almost appears that this was maybe one building at one point. I don't know the history, though. But yeah, that's fine if we, if we-
The best of the ability, I mean, it might be that-
Yeah.
They don't work for one reason or another, but I think we, I think the permit condition should say that, you know, make an attempt to match to-
That's fine.
To the building next door.
That's not a problem.
Done by Bill Lorigan, who's also downtown.
Perfect.
He probably knows what he specked out anyway.
Perfect. Yeah, I can talk to Bill. Not a problem.
For that. But that would bring off, that would add more amenity to the backside and make it look that-
I totally agree with you, yeah. Because really, honestly, once we fix those doors on the right, obviously replace the two doors, the backside of the building, short of some power washing, is, you know, it's architecturally relevant to the buildings that it surrounds.
Yep. I take it you'll be putting new windows in?
So the upper windows are actually fairly new. Those are only probably 10 years old. We would obviously have new windows on the right-hand side. We are awaiting our hers radar, which may determine whether or not we have to put in new windows, but from a budgetary perspective, the top windows are actually fairly new. They're replacement vinyl.
Yeah, they look like they're in good shape. I would just say, match them.
Yes, of course. Yep.
And always, we try to match the window, like, openings aren't exceedingly large, but sometimes we've got some really large windows where they try to cut the top third off, and we want to make sure that the-
So actually, I think if you look at the, the plan, there is an elevation, I believe that shows.
Let me zoom out now.
I think there's an elevation that, there you go, right there.
Yep.
There it is. So that's the existing, maybe, and then?
That says, let's see, demolition rear elevation.
Yep, so we got to keep going.
Oh, right here.
How many?
There we go, right there. There it is.
How many doors in the rear?
Two.
All right, so-
One goes to the commercial space, and one goes to the residential space.
Okay. So have the lighting, historic lighting both?
That's fine.
And it looks like they drew the, the design set as if you have to replace the windows.
They did. We're hoping that we don't have to replace the windows, but they did draw it.
I just wanted to make that point, that this might look a little bit different if-
Yeah.
The existing windows do look like they're in good shape.
They are. They're double pane, they're, you know, current energy code. I actually think the color is appropriate.
And what's the little piece of property that's just right in front of it? Like, is there, it just goes right to the curb?
We're right on the curb. Yeah, we have no land.
There. No land. Got it.
Yeah, and the curb actually looks to be somewhat adequate there.
I wish, I wish we had some land.
It's not a complete train wreck, so.
All right. And now we get to also some of the parking aspect.
Yeah.
Have you reached out to the city regarding?
We've talked to Liz Murphy on multiple occasions regarding it, and the, the plan from the get-go has been to, to lease spaces from the parking garage.
Have you talked to our parking department?
No.
About availability? I know what your plan is.
So I was, I was told there was plenty of availability. I have not talked to them recently. Obviously, we've been working on the project, but when we started the project, I was told that there was plenty of availability.
Okay. Because, and those have to be made as, saying that parking is part of the unit cost? Because it's like, you have parking?
Yes.
Not saying, like, saying, well, it's optional, you can purchase it separately, and then it's, then they don't decide to, and they want it because they want to park somewhere on a side street?
Yep. My understanding is parking is not required, though?
Parking is required, because you have eight units.
Okay.
Not required under six.
Okay.
But once you exceed that.
Okay.
The way we've handled this with other buildings on Main Street in that area is, we've just required a lease agreement in perpetuity with the city of Pittsburgh, that basically you just maintain the eight spaces.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, whatever it ends, I don't even know, 20 bucks, whatever it ends up being.
Yep.
You pay for the spaces. That way, because like Paula had said, I think the, the expectation is, if tenants are forced to pay themselves, they won't pay for-
Oh, I agree with that 100%, yeah.
So, but if you tell your tenant, these are the spaces we have for you,
Yep.
then they're more apt to park there.
Totally agree.
It's lower level of the Mill Street Garage, if you're using the Mill Street Garage, not the upper level.
Correct. And my thought exactly would be, if, if someone stopped paying, we lose the space, we lose the right to the space. No, we would want the spaces in perpetuity, for sure.
Perfect. Wonderful. And I, and I do, for the record, though I don't, I haven't seen it, I do remember the letter we did for, for one of the other projects we did there recently, and the gist of the letter was, there's plenty of spaces there. So I think the expectation to make it a permit condition isn't unreasonable. I think they can get, I think they'll get the space.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that pretty quickly. That's not a problem.
So the owner of the building to maintain those parking spaces for those eight units in pretty much perpetuity.
Yep.
The one comment I want to make about the, the building itself is, historically, that building and the building to its right?
Yep.
To its left from the rear, has been a huge issue with rubbish.
Correct.
And it's always looked unsightly on the sidewalks. And many times, the rubbish has been picked up, and there's rubbish still left all over the sidewalk.
Correct.
Now, I know that you're going to address that by having-
Internal.
Indoor storage here for rubbish.
Mm-hmm.
And the rubbish will be picked up on Crescent Street.
Mm-hmm.
But I would like to have recorded in the special permit that there cannot be ever any trash receptacles on Crescent Street.
Yep. The only thing I have to figure out in regards to that is related to the Tiki Tiki, who I believe currently has a contract with D and D to pick up trash there. So I would have to figure out an alternative for them, because they don't have access to the, to the residential trash. But I understand your concern.
The owner, the owner to you that abuts you is going to have some trash company, I'm not sure who it is.
Yep.
They're going to be coming into the building-
Yep.
And taking the trash from the Main Street area.
Okay.
And they, they're under the same situation, where I think we said to them, not to have rubbish barrels on Crescent Street.
I 100% agree.
I will say, since we're on that topic, Peter, and very quickly, because this doesn't, it impacts you only because it's, it's something we don't want to see. One of the work counselors has approached me at least twice about the barrels staying out on Crescent Street, and I've noticed it.
Yeah.
So I've actually been meaning to mention to Chantel and/or Felix that we have to, or Steve Curry, that we have to start, you know, keeping track of, if they're out there for more than a day, because I think we permitted 20, I think we said 24 hours in the permit for, for the Drury Building. And I believe it's the Drury Building that's been causing the problem.
Well, the board health has the wrong criteria. If it's moved stricter, it's like, within that period, it's in and out.
Yeah. So that was a, I agree with you, is the point to that conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Someone's brought that up. So we'll have to keep an eye on that and start enforcing that for the permits, that we do make that a condition.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's physically possible to, from a property management standpoint, to ever manage that, right? I think there has to be a, that's why I think internal trash makes the most sense, because at least I can manage that, right? That I can say is, that is the only place. Exterior, I don't feel how I could possibly ever manage that adequately.
It doesn't help the matter on the streets like this.
Oh, no. It's true.
Well, they shouldn't have it on the public way. That's the public way, so they can't-
Oh, no, no, no. I agree with you. I'm just saying, I could never have it outdoors. It just wouldn't, it just wouldn't work.
Yourself, yes.
I think, I think certainly, as a, as a general planning concept, the city probably has to, and Nick and I talked about this, the city probably has to develop a plan of, how do we expect Main Street businesses, Main Street, particularly residential units, like, like Bill Lorigan was just here for 16 units. You know, how do we make sure that there isn't that longstanding issue? So just something we might want to-
One of the things I've looked into is, other cities have kind of like a, either a, you could call it a white glove or a Butler service, which actually comes into the building and actually grabs trash from right outside each unit. I think, you know, Pittsburgh's going to be in a position where, in the coming years, something like that is going to be probably a viable business model, whether it's run by a nonprofit or a local business association, or whether it's run by an actual for-profit business. But I don't think that we're going to be able to go much longer without some sort of real hands-on trash removal service. That's just my opinion.
Good point.
Thank you.
This wasn't part of, and this question isn't derogatory at all, and it's not part of our approval, but was this part of the batch of TIPS that the city just did?
Yes, so a tie. So I have a tie. So I have a tax and credit exemption agreement, which is required for H-TIP. And so this is the final piece of the puzzle I need to apply for H-TIP funding.
Okay. And you will submit an agreement with the city regarding the spaces?
Totally fine, yep.
I'll say that has to be done prior to any occupancy.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Definitely.
Are there any, did we cover everything? Anything else? Any other questions?
Public comment?
Yes. I was asking the board. And so any other department comments?
Uh, hold on, I got them all up. I did, Chantel, I'll just mention this because, I failed to mention it, because I didn't expect one for the extension, but Bill Lorigan, his comments on here. Just cut, paste those and send them to Bill, and say these were department review comments. They're all FYI, apply for wastewater permit, wastewater fee schedule $1,000 per unit, separate roof leaders and floor drains. It, just to make, I, I think he knows, but only because I didn't mention it when he was here. And I'm going to almost guarantee yours, they are the exact same. Please apply for wastewater permit to account for new sewer usage. Wastewater fee schedule is $1,000 for each new unit. Please plan to separate roof leaders and floor drains from sanitary sewer in anticipation for sewer separation on Main Street. Any excavation required in the public layout must be performed by an actively bonded contractor that is in good standing with the city. Please contact engineering for a current list of bonded contractors.
So we're, we are on the list to have our sewer and water lines and fire suppression lines replaced as part of the new Main Street project. So much of that work's going to be completed as part of that project, and then obviously, we'll have internal stuff to support, as you mentioned.
Perfect.
We actually had a sewer backup today.
Nice.
All right. This is a public hearing. It's open for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience present that would like to speak on this matter? All right, anybody virtually?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, okay. Seeing none, if the board thinks it has enough information to-
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
We can close the hearing. Which motion has been made with the second? All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Amanda, roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Discussion?
I have just a couple of conditions. We discussed nothing, nothing different. The conditions that, actually, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan for P-Prop's development, 329 to 335 Main Street, eight residential units. And I have clean power wash the exterior, remove the window AC unit in the front of the building, all mechanical units to be placed on the roof, no exposed or visible exterior AC units, interior trash collection, decorate over exterior, excuse me, decorative lighting over the exterior doors in the rear, ideally to match the Drury Building. Match windows, where the windows are to be replaced, match them if they're, if they're going to need to match the existing windows. Provide lease agreements from the city of Pittsburgh for a parking garage in perpetuity paid for by the building owner to be provided to the tenants, and no trash receptacles on Crescent Street.
Second, or even on Main Street either.
I, I mean, I, I should say that. I think that one without saying, but yes.
Yes, we'll listen.
Main and Crescent, yep.
All right. Of motions been made with the second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good luck.
Good evening.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item this evening is a hearing, special permit and site plan review modification through Storage LLC proposing an additional conversion of 30,000 square feet where a movie theater was located within an existing plaza for use of self-storage located at 432 John Fitch Highway in the Commercial District. Also, this is for updating the site plan for stormwater modification. This modification will be including that?
Correct.
So updated site plans for-
Deputy Focus Attorney Jeff Avini for the applicant through storage. Tonight, I have by Zoom Josh Sullivan, and I should have Mike Malinowski from Aliza Major, who is the design.
Yep.
People, I just want to make sure they're both out there.
Yeah, do you want me to unmute both of them?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And then, just as a point of order, on the notice, it says 30,000 square feet. We're actually looking for 30,400 square feet.
Jeff, what, what do we want up on the screen? Anything that's particularly helpful?
What I'd like to do, maybe, Mr. Fontaine, I'll start with a narrative.
Okay.
And then I'm going to switch to Mr. Malinowski, who can go through the plan, and then we can discuss, or Josh Sullivan then can drop in and discuss some efforts about rental units and what have you.
Okay. I'll let you do the narrative first, then we'll-
Sure. So again, we, we did a pretty detailed narrative. In summary, we were here about last June. There was two hearings that were very detailed in relation to the project. Since then, what has occurred is, the movie theater has left. And just a brief history on the movie theater. My client did everything they could to try to save it. My client did everything they could to try to save it. They deferred rent. They actually stopped paying rent. The movie theater attempted to find a buyer, and they couldn't find a buyer. So it's going to be understood, they can't have over 30,000 square feet of vacant space. We went through the special permit process here, the site plan approval. They applied for a building permit. It was granted. And then we received an email from the apartment head and planning indicating that that permit was not covered by the site plan. The unfortunate part of that is, and I'll go into a little more detail, is that by that point, they had started some substantial construction, and they had ordered cabinets for the units spent.
So, I'm just...
Sure.
Why does someone try to pull a building permit where there was not in accordance with the site plan that was approved for a limit? I'm just saying, you're explaining about why and where your predicament you're in, but...
He had an understanding that it was, and I'm not faulting anybody but the permit issue, and they got a permit and they started doing work. And again, Madam Chairman, I'm not here to point fingers or blame anybody, but that's what happened. You know, and I guess part of it is maybe...
I'm just saying, it looked like it was at the city, and I'm like, well, you know, Stanley, it shouldn't have been applied for to begin with, but continue.
Well, they did, because they had an understanding, they thought it was covered. And again, I'm not here, I'm not here to give anybody adjuvant over that. It happened, and they expended funds, and they started their renovations. So the other important thing to focus on is that back when we did the initial plan, the planning board wanted its attention base. Right? And that was constructed because it was concerned about stormwater. And again, there was another issue where they started the construction, and it came to somebody's attention that there was a need of an NOI. It was intent.
Well, I'm glad it came to someone's attention, because that's what you pay your developer for, to look at those things. So I'm glad at that too, but that is a due diligence thing.
And Chairman, I'm not, again, the plan was reviewed. It actually went through conservation before you folks approved it, and we designed it. Now that has been removed, and we have a green area that's been grassed, it's warmed and seeded. I actually drove through there today, and you know, it's, it's not completely stabilized. We received an order of conditions that has been recorded, so that part of the process is, is taken care of.
Good.
Getting into the rental aspects, they have made concerted efforts to get, to get tenants in there, rental tenants. And what was interesting is Mr. Pelletier mentioned that he's got spaces on Main Street that he's had on the market for 150 days, and not many renters have taken them on. Joshua can speak to this in broad detail, but they've used a service, LoopNet report, I think we shared that in our submission, and they've had five units totaling about 12,000 square feet out there for an extended period of time, and not many takers.
It's not on LoopNet today.
You know what I didn't see on there? How much they're asking?
And they're not...
Josh, again, I'm not a LoopNet expert, but, and again, other people have said they can't find it on a LoopNet, but I was told it's on there.
It's on Showcase, which is some, it's pretty obscure. But I had to go actually try to look for it, so...
Well, if you drive through there, there's quite a bit of signage in the windows, and it says retail space available. And again, I...
If I'm unmuted, Josh, you're right.
I can address those. Go ahead, Josh. I'd like to sign in on that.
Yep. No problem. It is advertised on LoopNet. Unfortunately, for the general public, the way that it's not, you know, up to our choice, the way the software is constructed, if you have to be a subscribed, not paid subscriber, but you have to have an account, whether it be a broker or retailer, and any, you know, prospective tenant would have an account, as the report shows, you know, to Jeff's point, we have varying sizes of retail spaces listed by our broker, varying from, I think, just under 1,000 square feet, which would fit, you know, a small independent lawyer, accountant, yoga studio, something of that nature, all the way up to 8,000 square feet total. Refreshed the facades, done all the site improvements, have done what we can to bolster that marketing, and are constantly, you know, fielding interest, but unfortunately, haven't landed as many tenants as we had hoped, hoped to. Very proud and happy to have the armed forces in there in the Mill City Pub. We've heard some, some great positive feedback there, and we're happy with the success there. But unfortunately, you know, to Jeff's point with losing the cinema, that would add a massive, it would further hamper our vacancy and add to our hurdle there to get those spaces leased. And, you know, back to the previously approved permit and the building permit that was issued in the email there, that was, you know, our interpretation of the permit was that it was, you know, applicable to additional vacant space, and upon, you know, comment from the city, we understood, and you know, are going through, through the projected process. What was that?
Unfortunately, how that occurred.
I don't know how anyone could have gotten that, that expectation, when the three meetings we had, this board was adamant that, that frontage units had to be commercial space. So I don't know how that could have been misconstrued. This board was extremely clear about that.
It's in the permits about exactly what spaces to be built out and how to be built out, for what storage and what's the commercial units. So I just, you know, assumption just because somebody asked for a permit and got one.
Right. And we're here, and I think, with all due respect to the board, we're here to kind of right the ship, correct some things. And I'll say this publicly, I mean, you know, for whatever it's worth, the work that has been done on that area is, is nothing short of phenomenal. And I do a lot of permitting across the state, and I don't think any bigger than I that that is a complete turnaround down there.
It was definitely needed.
Yes.
To even, to even attract tenants. It was...
Yes. Agreed. We're, we're happy with the improvements made, and you know, we're hopeful for more continued interest beyond the Armed Force Center and Mill City Pub, but unfortunately, we haven't seen any thus far.
I know. Ellis said was contact you for, you know, rates, so there was no rates even for what we did find. And I understand, what, maybe since April, maybe you've been marketing these units?
It's been 14 months. April of '23, we added renovations and updated photos in August and have since then. We have the prices as negotiable more to not deter people. We found typically from our brokerage arm, if you insert prices, even if it's a range, it can deter people who may think they can't afford it. So we just say price is negotiable, and any interested party can reach out to us. We have spoken to Jimmy Johns. I know there was some miscommunication there. We did not ignore them or turn them away. They were interested in the DeAngelo's space, which was, obviously, and still is, an active sandwich shop. So I, you know, want to just reinforce, there was no lost opportunity there. We also reached out to Mary Jo after a meeting a couple of weeks ago, connecting her with our broker. We heard there was some interest from an adult daycare. We asked for that contact information. I don't believe we received a response back, but we would be willing and open to speak to that retailer, or any retailer that, you know, would come to us. We don't want you to think that, you know, we're, we're discouraging any retail development here. It's to our benefit as well to have these spaces occupied and rented. So, believe me, we are doing everything in our power to get them rented, but we don't think adding 30,000 additional vacant square feet of retail space is going to make the site any more desirable.
So it is commercial space, it's a commercial plaza. It is industrial use, at least in the city of Pittsburgh for the self-storage, and we've allowed some self-storage. What is the total square footage of the plaza at this time for the build-out? What is the square footage that you have for current storage? And then what is it that you're proposing, and what percentage is that?
Mike, are you unmuted? Can you reference the square footage on the site plan?
I can.
Perfect.
All right. So currently, we have, I'll have to run some numbers, but we have, let's see.
If you, if you want to, if you want to take some time and do that, I understand we put you on the spot. You can take a couple of minutes and do it in the background, and we can do some other stuff while you do that.
I'm trying to say that this would should be less than one half, because, yeah.
Okay. So, just to be clear, Jeff, and you can, this is, I think this is a pretty simple question. The, the specific modification we're talking about is just that rectangular portion where Cinema World is?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you see that in the plan?
Yeah, I got it right here. So I was...
The plan, the plan should be up...
Yeah, I have it. I was just holding off, because there's a million pages, and I didn't, I didn't know exactly what we're putting. But this is, so this is one of the, this is the proposed site that, so this middle portion here, with the self-storage that's already approved on the far right, commercial spaces here, here, and here. The, the, to answer, I guess, Josh's comment slash question about the adding 30,000 square feet, I personally, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I personally do not have a problem with the back portion of that Cinema World building being, being self-storage. I do think that, along with the people I've talked to in the city, and the comments that we got back the last time, maintaining storefrontage along that plaza is of paramount importance to the city of Pittsburgh. You might have some difficulty maybe today. We know that the commercial market, particularly right now, is not extremely active. However, we are not permitting for today. We're permitting for what that plaza should be. If we create self-storage for that entire plaza, it will never, ever be converted back to commercial space. So I think it's incumbent upon this board to, to maintain some commercial space along what is and always has been of, you know, one of our very few commercial plazas in the city of Pittsburgh. And, and I say, by saying that, I do not have a problem with the back, let's call it half to three quarters, to be self-storage. I think that that is an extremely friendly agreement that we could make, if the board agreed with me, to do that. Again, self-storage is not allowed by right. Self-storage is an industrial use. Self-storage is not a very desirable use in the city.
At least at this location.
We already approved a substantial amount of self-storage in this building. So I think anything above what we're approving, what we have already approved, would be a bonus to the applicant. Again, I, I fully agree, the back half of that building, the backside of that cinema, that Cinema World property, most likely, save in very unusual use, like a cinema or a bowling alley or something, will not be commercial space. So I'm okay with that personally. But the front of that building should maintain, should stay, commercial space. That's my personal opinion.
I just want to say that I, I agree wholeheartedly with what the vice chair is saying. And I can remember sitting here at our meeting when this project was first approved, and speaking for myself as a board member, there was nobody that was excited and jumping up and down that we wanted to convert the strip mall into storage space. Nobody. Yet it went through with the idea that we were going to preserve as much commercial frontage as we could in that plaza. And I'm a little bit surprised that you would come in front of the board and ask for 30,400 square foot, footage of space to be modified, and not even include a storefront in that space. And I agree with the vice, vice chair wholeheartedly. I would have no problem granting permission to use some of that back space for storage. But I would go one step further. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to request that you put two storefronts somewhere in that plaza of reasonable square footage. I'm talking 1,200, 1,500 square feet each. And really, that is the only way that I would consider moving forward with this project.
And I disagree. I feel, I feel like every commercial property that's coming in front of us is having trouble renting. We had the project on South Street. We had, we have, I mean, look at Main Street. I work on Main Street, and the place next to me is constantly vacant. And I feel like they've done a lot of work to this, this property. It looks great, and they do have commercial property. I'm not opposed to this. My opinion.
But I agree with what the vice chair was saying.
I mean, I agree with that too, but I also don't agree with...
We're not planning for next week. We're planning for years down the road.
But this is also a property owner.
True. I'm a, I'm a commercial owner on John Fitch Highway.
Yeah.
I'm lucky if I have half of my plaza rented.
Right.
For commercial space. It's the same rents since 1980, okay? So I am just saying, commercial is tough. That doesn't mean it's not, shouldn't be commercial, I should change it to residential or some other thing. We weren't opposed to, as similar, you see the plaza across the street, has some storage aspects with it. That plaza is not also fully rented out. It's not likely we're going to see commercial plazas fully rented out. It's a balance, but we only have five commercial plazas areas within the city. This is a vital one with the traffic and aspects of that. It is very key, and we do appreciate all the investment and work that's being done to upgrade it, because it was really necessary to do that, to attract it. And we want to keep amenities and things for our residents here instead of having to go out of the city for them all the time. So to that, to that end, where, that's where we look for, still keeping that commercial aspect. We don't want to see this slowly all come over to storage, just because that's where it is right now, because we can't rent them out right now.
Couple of things. To a certain extent, you know, you're making my point. There's still five storefronts that are available, ranging in all different sides. And Josh just told you, they're not getting any traction on them. And I had actually requested in here that we have the ability to phase those in. We've actually, we're going to pull that back, and we're going to leave those as storefront. Okay? I sit on a bank board, right? We discuss this all the time, and to Peter especially, right? If you look at the national trends, this retail usage, this retail spaces, it's not, it's not there. And, and our banks are not even making loans on projects like this, because there's not rents coming in supporting. And Peter, I understand wholeheartedly, you want to keep that storefront look. It's just not going to make it. It's not sustainable. This company has projects across the entire...
I'm aware of that.
State, right? They have them across New Hampshire. Josh, I'm probably even states out, right? They, they study this at nauseam, okay? And, and again, leaving the five spaces we have there now, they're more than willing to do that. They're going to try to get traction on them. They're going to try to make those work. But the true aspect of what's going on, their business model is, if you, if you look at the narrative, 85% of the customers are within three miles of this project. There's your need. That's the need. And, and again, Peter, with all due respect, I sit on a bank board, we look at these all the day. The storage aspect is somewhat of a growing industry. They're looking at these trends, because people are downsizing. This is a need, and this is true storage's business model.
It's also balancing the need, and this is our commercial area, and it's fine if you picked an industrial warehouse. We've got plenty of mill buildings to do over too, for, for storage and warehousing, not fully in a commercial area. So it, we're looking at a balance here too.
And the difference, Madam Chairman, is, is also the ability to develop the pad sites in front, which is stellar work in progress. And what I'm going to suggest to you is this, hold on, I'm going to suggest to you this, when, when John Fitch gets changed, is going to change, this whole aspect, this whole corridor is going to look different. It's going to look different. The pad sites are then going to basically kind of take over what you see off the road, and, you know, a restaurant, an Applebee, you know, Applebee's, some type of other usage is going to enhance it. And I'm not saying to forget about the back part, right? Because we're never going to forget about it. We're making every effort to enhance this whole area, including this retail. So taking a chance, you know, creating some more retail in front, to be quite honest, doesn't make a lot of business sense. And I hear you, and there may be other industrial buildings that we could do this in. Well, we're here now. We started the project, and they've been a fantastic neighbor. You know, the amount of time they spent jetting the pipes, getting the drainage under control, have you gone through there, Madam Chairman, and looked at the landscaping they've done?
Yes.
Right? These, these gentlemen, this company is very much vested in the city of Pittsburgh, and they want the city of Pittsburgh to be vested in them. And again, they'll leave these five retail spots. They have no problem doing that. But to make their overall model work, we're showing the need for the storage. Josh, what, do you have the projections of what the, the anticipated fulfillment will be? How many years out of the...
Yeah, well, I can speak to the, the pent-up demand, and you know, why we were, you know, proposing this, and you know, no one could have predicted the future, as has been mentioned a couple of times here. You know, no one wanted the cinema to leave, or thought that was going to happen. And so, you know, we're trying to, to figure this out, and how to make it a financially continuing, you know, development that pencils. And, you know, from, to Jeff's point, back up a little bit, you know, this is a very centric use. And I understand from a zoning code perspective, it's not classified as a retail use, but like he said, 85% of these people live within three miles. They are residents. We have their customer information, their zip codes. We know where they are. They are sometimes local residents storing personal goods. 40% of them are small businesses, accountants, lawyers, salesmen, blue collar, plumbers, tile guys. They store materials in there among, you know, paperwork, files, whatever they may need. So I, I understand where you're coming from, classifying as industrial, but it really is a changing industry, and you know, lends itself to more uses than, than just industrial. But Jeff, to your point, yes, the market in Pittsburgh is about 60% of what a balanced market would be nationally for needing storage. So we've seen the, you know, velocity of the current stabilization on the stores that's been built out, and you know, the proof's in the pudding, that there is so much pent-up demand for storage here, which is why we're proposing to move forward with it. We wouldn't be proposing this if we didn't think it was going to be...
Yeah, we're not disputing that there's a need for storage, but it's a commercial, it's our main commercial, one of our main commercial areas.
You know, again, going back to the very first meetings that we had on this storage project, I think one of the board members, it probably was me, expressed my fear that, okay, what's going to happen now? We've approved this project, and what's going to happen is, if stores move out and become vacant, they're going to want to convert all that space into storage. And here we are, that's happened.
No, it's not all the space.
No, but it's, it's a huge chunk of space. 30,400 square feet is a large chunk of space.
So, can you, did you do the calculations about how much storage? I want to know percentages. How large, how large is the building now? What's the current square footage? What's the current storage space?
He may still work it in. It's way too much in my head.
That's okay, that's okay.
A Tuesday night before Thanksgiving holidays.
So, so I...
And I don't disagree with what the vice chair said either, about the back of the building, but they're still keeping it, that it's commercial up front.
I mean, you know, again, this, we're talking about a situation, and Jeff, I know you and I talked about this. I think the, the principal concern here we have is, and the concern like Peter had mentioned, is we're dealing with an applicant who wants storage in that entire building. I think that, that if they had their way, that entire building would be self-storage. And I think that that
No, it's not. All due respect, Paul, that's not... Josh, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I
I mean, that's what your business model, that's what it says on your website. That's your business model. You do self-storage.
Right, but they Correct. It is market-dependent, and to the points with the square footage, there's a limit where it would not make financial sense to build out storage. And we would not, you know, anticipate nor want this entire facility to be stored. We've converted many other similar, you know, traditional retail uses with storage in there. And to Jeff's point, we're in the process of developing a Panera Bread pad site in one of those. We've brought in Chili's, Starbucks, Dunkin's because the parking ratio has loosened up. Because the more you add retail storefronts there, whether it's vacant or not, that locks up the parking lot with required parking spaces. So again, no one predicted this. We were trying to scramble and, you know, make this a financially feasible vacant space, investing more money to, you know, create vacant retail space for additional lease when we already have up to 8,000 square feet available for lease does not help our financial situation. I understand the wants and needs from both sides, but we are absolutely not opposed to a combination of uses. We are just trying to continue to make this development work from a financial standpoint while, you know, again, addressing the needs of the community.
Okay. So if I can, Paul, while I'm on the conversation, my point being that you're a self-storage company. Your goal is self-storage. I understand, obviously, if you have desirable commercial space that you can rent to a tenant in, you know, cooperation with your principal use of self-storage, I'm sure you're willing to do that, which you are doing here, and that's fine. What you have to understand is, from a planning perspective, this is a commercial zone. This is, as Paul had said, one of our very few large-scale commercial plazas that we are turning from numbers to be determined that they're working on, 100,000-plus square feet into maybe 8,000 square feet. And again, the numbers, I'm sure, are coming. We have to understand, we're still dealing with a commercial retail building that you want to convert entirely, not entirely, predominantly into, you know, a non-commercial use. Now, again, it's fine in the back portions of this building, but this is a commercial building. This is a commercial retail site. The long-term planning of the city of Pittsburgh should be that this retains its use as a commercial plaza and as a commercial site. I think when we get done with this, they're still going to have substantially more self-storage space than they are going to have commercial space, substantially. I mean, well above what's there now. I think that we need to balance what's best for the city of Pittsburgh, and I don't think turning that whole unit into commercial is best for the long-term perspective for the city of Pittsburgh.
Do you have any, I know you say, mentioned about pad sites, but any planned or square? You mentioned about pad sites, future pad sites.
So the issue with the pad sites, and Josh can elaborate a little bit more, is, again, the retail aspect locks up parking. So I guess, you know, trying to do an end around here a little bit, not in a bad way, you know, the more retail space that we develop, it could cramp the pad sites. Because by way of example, if we get a restaurant that wants to come in, right? Which, you know, honestly, folks, if you've got a restaurant down there, it would be a home run. Okay? You've got a restaurant down there, they're going to need
Good.
Oh, you've got a restaurant in there, it's going to have a high demand on parking. So there's only so much parking. So if you look at it the other way, the storage use has limited parking. It basically has zero parking, okay? The restaurant could have a tremendous impact on parking. So what you're asking us to do is potentially limit a future pad site or two pad sites.
So I think you need to demonstrate that and show us, and show us the parking, and show us the pad sites, and what potential layout, square footage about.
Just, you know, because I've worked on pad sites. When you, the way the pad site works is, again, you know, you have somebody with an interest, you go through a process. And again, if it's a restaurant, so it'd be, it's almost not impossible, but it's difficult, by way of example, depending on the size of a restaurant, is going to dictate the number of parking spots you need.
I mean, there's a sea of parking there, Jeff. I don't think that, I don't think that any amount of, even if these were fully occupied, they would impact your development of one pad site or two pad sites, which is all you have there, two pad sites?
Josh, do we have a number on the pad site? Oh, actually, Mike might
I mean, I remember it on the original plan. There was only one that was drawn in the original plan.
Right, but we deregistered it so we could avoid going through Land Corps. So I don't know what the projection would be for pad sites.
My point was, just a general point of, there's a sea of parking there. So I don't think parking is inhibited, even if these are fully occupied units.
Is this exceeding the 50% of the building space?
Is what exceeding?
This proposal, the total square, the total storage for what you have for available space?
That's a math question.
I know. It is a math question because it also affects your flood issue about making it floodproof greater than
It's already been floodproof.
Well, that's good, because before it was an argument of it's not greater than 50%, we don't have to floodproof it. So it's in your best interest to floodproof it since it's storage.
Yeah, I can speak to that in terms of additional site improvements, which, Mike, I would, you know, like you to take over and just kind of, you know, reference some of those. But we have moved ahead of schedule beyond, you know, what was proposed originally in terms of the floodproofing, sidewalk improvements, or parking lot in addition to sidewalk improvements. But Mike, did you have a chance to look at those numbers in addition to kind of touch on some other site improvements that have made to date?
Yes. So if we add the 30,400 square feet as part of this proposal to the 79,704 square feet, it gets us to 110,104 square feet of self-storage within the building.
What's the total building size?
Total building size is 100, we have 171,460 square feet total in that whole plaza.
I would like to clarify, that is just for the main building. Also, as part of, you know, our development ownership, we own from the DeAngelo's, the Rollstone Bank, Enterprise Bank, Carewell Urgent Care, and Aaron's as well.
Yes, but you recently also just A&R subdivided those off that lot?
Correct.
I can't.
You recently just subdivided those off the lot. It's no longer part of this lot, so to speak.
Yep, nope, same ownership, different parcels, correct.
Yes, yep.
So the assessor has 159,945 square feet, but, Mike, you're saying it's 10,000 square feet bigger than that?
They have, well, so when I looked at it, it was, to Josh's point, I looked at DeAngelo's, the Rollstone.
Okay, so this building is 160,000 square feet?
Yes, give or take.
Because that's what the assessor has. The assessor has 159,945.
Okay, so 160,000 square feet, for which currently there's 79,000 square feet of storage?
There's 110,000 proposed total, but yes.
Right, but right now, 79.
Yes.
That was included.
Yes. 79 and change. Mike, is that what you said? 79 and change is what's already existed, what's already approved?
Yes, yeah, 79,704. What we had is part of the original proposal.
So just slightly under half right now?
Correct.
So we're a majority commercial, less industrial, and you're seeking that, it's pretty much like kind of flip-flop it?
I guess technically currently it would be majority commercial right now, and we'd be asking to add an additional 15% of storage.
Chantel, I don't know, I forgot to ask Liz today, but is it safe to say that the city of Pittsburgh and the community
She went to the bathroom.
Okay, I will wait. I was talking to myself.
At that. And whether or not that's a semantic piece of trust, trying to be, let's always stay like, you know, 51% commercial aspect, but I am not myself opposed to converting a rear portion of it additionally into storage to the expansion.
I think that, I think that just like we treat, just like we've been treating Main Street with the large, deep buildings, having some flexibility with how we treat the rear of those buildings, because the way that they were used historically can no longer generally be used that way. So again, I certainly
I guess that was being
I certainly am more than willing to be flexible in adding self-storage space. It's just, like I said, you know, and I'm going to wait to talk, but I think the expectation is, at least as far as I know, that the community development office in the city of Pittsburgh's official position in City Hall is that they agree with our previous assessment, that the front of this building should be commercial space. I mean, you met with them, Jeff. Will you tell me what they said?
Josh was at that meeting, and so was Chris. I don't believe Chris is on. We gave them a pretty good explanation as to why retail did not make sense. And, you know, my understanding, leaving that meeting, was they were in agreement with it. Josh agreed to be in consistent contact, in continued contact with economic development. And if we get a lead, we'll walk, we'll go with it.
Okay. Chantel?
Just another comment on the way. Or you want to do that?
Yes, I do. Chantel, I don't know, I assume you're in, obviously, you're in the office with Liz, and you talk to them, and the mayor, and community development. Since this was, you were around last year when we did this, is it safe to say that this, let me ask it this way, has City Hall and economic development and/or community development, have they changed their perspective on this? Or do they have the same opinion they had a year ago where they agreed, and part of the reason why we had the determination we had was they agreed with the assessment that the front of this building should remain commercial space and not self-storage?
I do believe that is still the same opinion, as far as I know. I don't believe that changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we just go back to another point? I just want to emphasize something. So the Madam Chairman made a comment about we subdivided the parcels, which we didn't. And what I think I want to focus on is that the purpose of that was because, if any of you have ever dealt with registered land in Land Corps, to try to get a simple plan amendment done could take a year, year and a half. So we deregistered. The ownership is still the same entity that owns the plaza. So what I've suggested to the board, if you add up all the other, and I go, Madam Chairman, you've got a maybe different opinion on this, but if you add up all those other, you know, the DeAngelo's, the tire shop, Josh, help me here, the tire shop, the
Yeah, we've got Aaron's and the Urgent Care and the both banks.
Can Mike get a calculation on that rather quick?
I think that was the 171 he gave us originally. That was the 11,000 more square feet.
No, I think that was the building.
No, 160 was the building.
Yeah, but he said in that it was
All those other buildings are going to add up to a lot more square
Okay. Mike, do you have the number for that?
I just want to walk through this with the board. If you look at all those other uses, I think the commercial use is going to greatly outweigh the storage use. And I hate to mention it, we subdivided it, but we didn't subdivide it for the purpose of saying we want to make a mega storage facility. We subdivided it because permitting and projecting, project development going forward with a DED registered is a lot easier. So if I had, 2020 being always wonderful, if I knew that was going to be your position, we would have left it all
Well, it would have been the same ownership, because then, otherwise it'd be subdividing it. Now you can sell it under separate ownership, so
Well, yeah, but, no, that's, right, but that wasn't the purpose of the subdividing. The purpose of the subdividing was
Well, I understand that, but that was one of the consequences of it.
Right, but to flip your argument backwards now, if you added up all that other area, it's probably disproportionate commercial in relation to the self-storage.
But why would we do that?
It's not, but it's not part of the
Strip mall.
It's not part of, great, it's not part of the strip mall any longer.
I'm not worried about all the other commercial property on the site. I'm worried about the strip mall only.
And I agree, but I guess the point is that the ownership has remained the same. The subdividing is only done to make future permitting in relation to the pad sites easier. That was, I will tell you right now, that was the whole purpose of the deregistration.
I don't follow you for that. I don't think that that's important necessarily.
So springboarding at that, this is a fontaine. If you look at the overall use now
It's another 16,000 square feet. I just added them all up. So it's, instead of 160, it's 170, what is it, 16? 176.
Right, so the ratios, the ratios is a lot, is better. So if you look at the whole project now, it's kind of congruent.
Still more than half.
We can, again, we can
I'm just pointing out
We can go back, we can go back
If we're picking up a rent of whether or not, it's one more than the other, but that, aside from that, it was still about, something nominal about storefrontage, or creating some type of mixed-use aspect there, aside from storage.
If there's ever a mixed use, this is the place.
Yeah.
And there is, Jeff, and there is. We're going to allow a majority of self-storage. There's going to be a majority of self-storage in that building.
This is the mixed.
What, in relation to the 30,400 square feet, what is the board's take on what they would want? Because, you know, that's not what we're looking for, but what is the board's take of what they would want? Because if we're going to start talking percentages
Yeah. So my suggestion would be, and I'm certainly open to conversation
I can't, I can't commit to this
No, no, I understand. My suggestion would be, and this is just me, I'll leave it up to the board, but that you maintain that line across. So basically, if you look at, I'll pull it up. If you look at the aerial, I was just doing it from the aerial. Hold on, let me pull it up on the screen.
What would be complementary to the spaces you already have?
So basically, so basically, we have a line of existing, and I don't have the floor plans here in front of me. I can pull them up. But you have these existing commercial buildings, storefronts that go like this across here. So here's, I was doing in Google Maps earlier. I could, hold on, I could place a pin in Google Maps. I got to do it here. Let's do this. 432 John Fitch. It's easier doing in the aerial.
Were those, was that storage space intended to be accessed via the frontage or from the existing storage location, frontage, like going within the building and through it? Or was it going to have yet another entrance for patrons?
I don't know if I have the, Mike, could you answer that question? Mike, I'm not, I don't have, I didn't bring all the plans with me.
I can pull up what you guys sent, too.
And there's their access to the rear, via the rear.
Yeah, there's two, there's two access points along the rear. The front, I don't think would be connected because you've got some intermediate space in between, so you can see what's being renovated. It's not connected, it's not physically connected to the other self-storage piece.
Well, all right, so if you did that, in order to use that back, you would need a corridor. Anyway, you would need some access
Right.
in the front of that building
Yep.
to be able to get to the back if we did that. So, and this is just, I have not, I have no formed opinions. I'm just, this is just, the first thought was basically, you take the Army Recruiting Building, you take the one to the right, and you just, you know, straight line across. That ends up being about 190 feet deep, something like that? And, you know, obviously, that would, that would remain another 170, that would be about 175 feet deep of storage and about 90 to 100 feet deep of commercial space. I think that's consistent with the other storefronts you would maintain. Like if we were, if someone were to build a strip mall, that's, you know, you would maintain that, that strip, that stretch across. I think that that, I think that that makes sense, at least logically to me. Those sizes would be somewhat typical. We'd be talking about, the total is only about 2,000 square feet, because it's 100-ish deep by 200 across. That's 2,000 square feet.
And there's currently access to the rear storage facility around the building
Yeah, and I mean, you could, you could create a, you could create a walkway corridor there. You cut that 200, 200 feet, it's 220 feet, you cut it to 200 feet. And again, I'm ballparking numbers here, but, you know, you only need, you know, maybe 10, 8 feet, 10 feet for a corridor. I don't know what you need to move, to have people be able to move stuff down a hallway. But, you know, let's, for the sake of argument, you say 10, 10 or 15 feet, that's more than enough. You still have, you know, 1,800 square feet of, you know, active storefront space there. And, you know, if we deferred to what every applicant wanted to do and didn't take into the interest, the best, the best, the best interests of the city of Pittsburgh, we would be doing a disservice to the city of Pittsburgh. The people that we deal with, that deal with these all the time, like our community development office, our economic development coordinator, you know, the people that we've talked to in the past, I think they agree with, and you can find, you can find out if this is wrong, but from all I've heard, they agree with my, with our consensus that we've had so far, or at least my conversation today, over what the applicant wants to do.
So if I'm hearing you, basically, you want an additional 2,000 square feet of retail.
What I want is to maintain that storefront space. That's what I want.
You can have a corridor that, consider you can have a corridor for storage that goes down to the back.
That's, that's a development, that's a
Yeah, and I understand, it's an engineering
A thing like that, but still, we want to see that retain commercial in the front aspect of it.
So again
See what reasonable space sizes would be to complement what you have or offset what's already there, or to say there's some, a little bit more variability in space sizes or
Right, so if I'm hearing you, and again, I, you know, I have no authority to agree to this, I consent to it, but I mean, what I'm hearing is you want about another 2,000 square feet of retail, around that ballpark number.
It could be one larger unit, it could be two
I think the amount of retail that would be available, I mean, the number could be certainly flexible. You know, I'm, in my mind, I'm looking at 34,400 square feet is what you're asking for?
No, 30,400.
30,400. If there, if there were two storefronts carved out at 1,200 square feet each, you still would end up with 28,000 square feet of storage. And to me, that's, that's a huge number. And that's, that's kind of a, a nice give and take. You're asking for 30,400, 28,000? That's pretty, pretty darn good. It could be nothing.
Right.
Well, I...
Yeah, well, just to consider that. And I want to bring, Ellen, do you have any insight?
So if we, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just, you know, I agree that we need to keep some retail space in this. I mean, I agree with everything that the board has said so far, especially with Peter. I remember him voicing his concerns at the last meeting, and I think these are still valid concerns as we look forward to the best use for this property.
I don't see any dimensions on your plan, sorry, Ellen, I don't see any dimensions on the plans for the building. I just want to know how deep it is. Mike, do you, how deep is that, the cinema world section?
So the cinema section is...
Because...
It's about 250 feet deep.
And ballpark width?
Uh, 121.8.
Oh, exact, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
121.8.
So the, the Army Reserve is about, they're about 80 feet. There's a little, sort of, that little, sort of, jut out in the back, doesn't, and then the other retail spaces next to it, which are A160 and A170, those are, those are about 50 feet deep.
So, so, I mean, if, if 50 is reasonable, and, and like I said, I'm trying to take off some for the corridor. I mean, we, we were missing a zero there, Peter, when we were doing the math before, but 50 by 200 is 10,000 square feet. You know, and again, that's taking into account some sort of, you know, access point to the rear, which I'm just, I'm just spitballing, I'm assuming has to happen unless you, unless you want them to get to it from the rear, which, like, I think we talked in the past, we prefer the unit access to be from the front, just so you don't have trash and, you know, people loitering and, you know, all the, which I'm sure you guys want, you want that as much of your plaza as anyone does. The, the total depth, you know, as long as they're marketable, when I say marketable, as long as they're typical usable units, I don't particularly have a major issue with. You know, if we're talking, we would be talking roughly a third commercial, two-thirds self-storage, if you ballpark those figures that we were just doing. And again, I think that that, I think that that's a, that's a very fair trade-off for the city of Pittsburgh.
As you're still looking at this being predominantly industrial over commercial percentage-wise, any which way it's looked at.
So if you did it that way, it'd be 20,000 plus square foot, it'd be 20 and change of new space, plus the 79 of existing, that'd be 100,000 square feet of self-storage space, which would be, what does that end up being, 60?
So, yeah, so, the retail units are going to be disproportionate to what we already have?
No, 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 I, I know, I'm saying there'd be, he just said the sizes. He said 50 feet for one of them, 75 for the other. Deep. So if we're talking that deep, in, in the width, you were talking roughly, what does that end up being, 50 by 200? That's 10,000 square feet, less, you know, some sort of corridor access, let's call it, you know, nine, even if you call it 10, even if you call it 10, that you're still talking 20,000 square feet of new self-storage space, which is what I just calculated, plus the 79 that is existing, that's 100,000 square feet of self-storage space in this building. That's 65% of the building is self-storage. And, and quite honestly, I, I think that that, I think that that is a very reasonable expectation.
All right. I don't think the board's going to take any action on this tonight, talk about this.
Well, I mean, this plan, if they want to vote on it, I wouldn't be in favor of this plan.
Right.
Understood. No, we, we hear your comments, and I believe we need to, we need to circle up internally and go from there.
And can you provide, I know you've spent about a narrative, but just an update on all the phasing work, you've done a lot of work out there.
We've done it, it's already been submitted.
Yeah, we've...
Should have it, I have a spare copy.
They did send it in, I do have that.
But I couldn't, Madam Chair, and again, you know, we've, we've been at this for a while tonight.
And I don't want to be discouraging, we want to be partners in it, and we really appreciate all the development that's, that's occurring here, but we have to, we're balancing two.
Right, right now, I don't necessarily have that feeling, maybe it'll change. And again, I don't want to go back and talk about retail. I think Tracy made a nice comment, you know, about the whole retail aspect of it, but, you know, Josh and his team will circle back, but, you know, I think, Madam Chair, what's important is, Mike spent some time on this document today, it should have been downloaded.
I, I have it, I can pull it up.
I have, I have copies, if anybody wants, I have color copies.
Because I'll just say, before even any modification occurs, we want to see what the current status is, what the current conditions of the permit.
I'll tell you what, it's right here, we can go right through it.
The aspects of that.
Because I, I thought it was...
Yeah, so I can elaborate for that, so we can look at that.
That's okay, if it was just uploaded today, it's like, I'm look...
Madam Chairman, I want you to see this, I think it's important, you want to see it.
Do we, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yeah, absolutely, I can make you a panelist.
Great.
All right. Because what I have is, I have some nice drone footage from Project Manager out there. So this shows everything that's been done.
So while Mike's pulling it up, what Mike did today, and it's very helpful, is, if you go to page 2 of 5, he's color-coded all the conditions, and future items, no response needed at this time, with work to be completed within the applicable timelines are in blue. General comments, no response are in yellow. Items removed, part of the NOI, which is the order conditions, is in red. And then work associated, item complete, are in green. And if you go through this document, a majority of the items are green. And I guess, Madam Chairman, one of the concerns was about the phasing. They're actually ahead of all the phasing, all the phasing is done. The striping is done, the landscaping is done, the order conditions aspect is, is done, it just has to be stabilized. They've spent, I don't even know how much, jetting and getting the drainage under control. They're actually working on another, kind of a modified system in relation to the, some duck bill gizmo that's going to prevent additional flooding in the future. So as far as what you asked us to do originally, they're about a year plus ahead of schedule.
Okay.
So when you want to talk about being a good partner, they've been a great partner.
Well, very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I just, just a little discouraged about why, why we were here in, not in advance, so...
Sorry?
I says, I'm just a little perturbed about, you know, coming forward, about how, how it transitioned, and that it didn't happen before you did construction work because of a project development that should have been adhering to all these conditions. So that being said, it's, it's...
We have, we've adhered to everything.
No, no, why you're here tonight, ask for the modification. That's what I'm...
We can, we can rewind that tape, I don't think we need to do that.
So that's why I wanted to say about yes, and, you know, trying to work with you as well.
Go ahead, Mike.
So can everybody see my screen? So this is a...
Yes, we can.
An aerial image of the plaza. We've got Rolstow Bank at this location here. You can see that the entire parking lot has been repaved. The original design was to have that ground down, it took off an inch and a half, the top pavement, and repaved on that surface. You can see sort of the darker islands, I'll show another view of that, but that is, it's bark mulch and landscaping in those islands. Landscaping along the front has been done, and this is the area of that previous basin. And based on our discussions and subsequent permitting through Concom, that basin was eliminated. We still have sort of the stone swale that is here. Historically, there have been instances where the Baker Brook has jumped its bank at this point and come through here. So all of that has been cleaned up, there's been some large-scale rocks that have been placed behind the D'Angelo's. And this area is, will be a depression that will be grassed. Right now, it's, you can see it green, that's a hydroseed. This is, photo's a little bit older, this work has been completed, and that's all been stabilized. And it's actually meant to be a wildflower mix, based on our conversations with the conservation agent, to sort of promote and restore the 200-foot buffer within that area. So you can see another sort of angled view, and this is sort of a closer view. So you can see the landscape islands are all landscaped. This is in front of the, the other bank down on that side, and you can see all the facade work that has taken place along the front of the building as well. And that's the D'Angelo's piece. All of this area has been cleaned up and restabilized. We were doing some repairs for this drain line. All of the drain lines have been jetted, and as part of the conservation proceedings, duck bill, check flow valves have been installed in all of the drain to stop any water coming in from Baker Brook. That was primarily the cause of some of the flooding that had happened in the existing parking lot.
Thanks, Mike, because I had no idea what that was.
Yep.
That's good, it was, I'm glad you've got a handle on the stormwater issues there, because it's, when you first, when it was first purchased, it was like, what is this did we just walk into? So now...
Yeah, and part of, and a lot of that had to do with just sort of lack of maintenance before the Brady Sullivan folks took hold of it. So, once they'd jetted a lot of the, the existing drainage out, that greatly helped the situation in that parking lot. And now, the installation of the one-way valves on all of the drain connections that go out to Baker Brook will greatly help that situation as well. And additionally, as you can see, we've got large areas of landscaping that's now there. Like this whole area was all paved, this entire area was paved before, and that's all now been restored to grass. So we have a substantial decrease in the overall pave nature of the plaza.
I believe, and this is just to curious, I think, I do think, you know, again, I think you guys have done a good job, and it's part of the reason why I'm willing to allow more self-storage in the, in the plaza, but you guys have done a nice job, it looks good. What I think someone at DPW told me though was, we haven't had any rains to test anything yet, so...
It's raining pretty good today, Mr. Mike.
Yeah, but we don't, we didn't even get an inch of rain today. So what, when Baker Brook crashes, it goes over its banks again, it will be interesting to see. And again, I don't expect you to solve that problem, I think that's an unsolvable problem. The, the point was, I think someone had told me, we haven't had anything to test this site yet. So I don't think anything's passed any test yet, but I do think it will be better. So I think you guys have done a good job.
Yeah, correct, and that was part of our discussions with the conservation folks, when we were sort of going through and looking at this, because all of that area is within their jurisdiction, being within 200 feet of the river buffer. And there's, there's no amount of engineering that we can do that's going to stop Baker Brook in this situation. So it's more of, what can we do to sort of minimize sort of its impacts? And yes, taking out pavement, that helps. It's, we've got a nice sort of grass depression that's going to end up in this area. So that's, a lot of the water's going to sit here first before it gets out into this parking lot. And it now, any of the stuff that does get in the parking lot, all those drains have been cleaned, and they can start to flush water back out to Baker Brook.
Awesome.
And Mike, can you show, the, the sign just got approved, what's the vocation of that sign that just was approved?
Um, that I don't know. So I know there was, Josh may be able to elaborate on that a bit more, but I know that there was a new sign, a new pylon sign that was approved, and I believe it's been installed already. Correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, on that?
It was supposed to be today, I haven't heard an update, but it's right where your cursor is, the existing one.
I didn't see it, I wasn't necessarily in party to...
Yeah, the weather made it, might have had an effect on that, but correct, it was new pylon sign, which will be, look fantastic there.
Excellent. Presumably the same height or lower than what was already there?
I believe that ZBA approved that, Josh?
Oh, they, oh, they did, oh, okay. I only ask because usually we do it in our site plan.
I'm fairly certain it was, I'm not...
Okay.
And I believe it's, it's utilizing the existing pylon, just a new face.
Oh, there you go. Yep, no, it's fine, I was just curious, I mean, if you're going to say it was 150 feet or something, then, but...
You want to advertise all the storage.
Yeah, right, you know, that, I don't fault people for signs, I was just curious.
Are you, and it's, this is looking great, and I understand, like, with the subdivision of the parcels too, it's still underneath the same ownership, but you'll be looking to doing like a similar upgrades of the landscaping, or use some type of uniformity for those parcels?
Yep, they, I can speak to that briefly. In terms of at least the paving and parking lot, we held off on the D'Angelo's to the left of the main center, and the Aaron's and the urgent care to the right, just due to the time of year, so come springtime, those will be looking just like the main plaza.
Okay. The aspects of that. All right. I'm not sure if we've received any other, like, DPW comment.
There's no comment on this.
I appreciate the narrative here with the updates, because we did want to clarify those stormwater conditions that would also need to be removed, modified from the special permit condition, so, like, the ones in red.
The things that no longer apply than we previously approved.
Correct, we would modify them.
I think he identified...
Yeah, yeah, that's what she's saying, we have to change them.
That's what I'm saying, we'll have to...
That's why, that's why we did that FEMA, so you could see it.
Correct, I'm just like, aside from the request for additional storage space, there's this request to modify, modify the conditions.
Right, that's, again, that's why we outlined it in the way we did.
Yes.
Jeff, I don't know, were you, were you at the Concom meetings?
I was not.
Okay, was someone here, was Mike at the Concom meetings? My only question was about the fence, did Concom particularly have an issue with the fence?
Oh, actually, I was.
Or was it the work of installing the fence?
I was at that meeting, there was, I can comment...
They had a big issue with the fence.
There was quite a debate about that, so...
Which, which is, which is...
About shopping carts and trash.
Yeah, which is odd, because we're, the primary goal was to protect the Brook from trash, which is why we had the fence in there. So I, I mean, obviously, I watched the meetings, I don't remember because they...
I was at that meeting, it was...
They were more concerned...
It was quite a debate.
Oh, they...
Yeah, they were less concerned about the trash, simply because there's full-time site management as part of True Storage. They were more concerned with the impacts of the, the actual installation of that fence than, more than anything else. And it's, they were more concerned with that versus now, you've got a Class A retail site, you've got security cameras all around the back of the property as part of the improvements that True Storage has done, that, and, and they have maintenance staff to sort of police that. So they were less concerned about the trash and more concerned with the impacts to the bank, because in, in some instances, the bank is literally at the back edge of the pavement, which, to today's standards, none of that pavement would have been allowed due to the proximity of the bank to Baker Brook.
Right.
So...
Yep, thank you. I don't want to belabor the point, I, we're obviously, we're not going to, we're not going to contradict something that Concom did, so, and, and that's certainly their prerogative. I don't have a problem with it, I was just curious.
A question would be, so would you be willing to reexamine your site plan request that we would continue this modification? Or would you like us to vote on it this evening?
Jeff, I'll let you, you know, take that, but I think we need to discuss internally before we move forward.
So I guess, Josh, I'll take that, we'll agree to continue till the December 17th meeting? Josh?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a little, it's, we have to move it a week sooner than our normal meeting, so, coming up quickly.
I totally understand why you wouldn't want to have a meeting on Christmas Eve.
Yeah. All right, is any other, is there any information that board members would like to see or address when they come back? Okay.
No, other than what we talked about. Like I said, in concept, I'm perfectly okay with the idea of more storage, just, I think we need to, I'm going to follow up with some people at City Hall too, and some of the councilors, to get some input on what our stakeholders feel. some of the councilors, to get some input on what our stakeholders feel, and we'll carry that to next meeting.
Sure.
All right. So, that being said, is there a motion to...
Public comment? I don't know if you asked for any.
Thank you. Any for the department comments? Is anybody in the audience here that would like to speak on this matter? All right, virtual? And is there any questions? Virtually, anybody pass?
Make a motion, continue to December.
Second. A motion's made with the second to continue to our December meeting. Roll call, vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Our next item this evening, our last hearing this evening, is 265 Summer LLC proposes to change the use of operation of a, change of use for the operation of a professional office for ABA Educational Center with the renovation of parking lot located at 265 Summer Street.
Hello. Good evening.
All right, I can pull that up on the screen.
I guess at first, I was still a little bit confused, because in the application, it was from Wagner Motors and not ABA Educational Center.
I'm sorry. Say again.
I think I was a little bit confused. The application is from Wagner Motors and not from ABA Educational Center.
Yeah, the, the ABA is, Wagner is the owner of the building, and so that we're, they want to rent this space out to ABA Centers.
Are you representing the educations?
I'm representing Wagner Motors.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And just so you know, I pulled up your plan. It's up on the screen, so everyone can follow along.
Thank you very much. So, the, the current location is for the, or where we're proposing to do the ABA Center is currently a retail space, and we want to allow a change in use for this purpose of the professional office for the ABA Centers. And we've also proposing some changing in the existing curbing around, on the road of Horseshoe Road. Wagner would like to change that to granite curbing instead of the present Cape Cod berm that's, it's out on that edge of the road.
While we're on that, because I, because that's the first thing that came up, I like the idea of granite curbing, but there was, our DPW brought up some questions about ownership of that.
Okay.
That Wagner might not own any part of Horseshoe Drive?
Well, we, we do not own the road. I assume that the...
It's not a city street.
It isn't.
No.
It's not.
It's actually...
It's a private, it's an improved private way, as far as we've been told.
And DPW was kind enough to forward information regarding that, because it's recorded that the owners of all the surrounding lots, I think four lots, jointly have responsible for it and maintaining it.
Okay.
So you can't, you don't have property rights, you would need to have releases from all property owners...
Okay.
...in order to make any changes. But in addition to that, fire department also referred comments, because that's a turnaround, whether or not it's even can be allowed to be reduced as you're proposing there. It's going to, is an issue.
We're, we're not proposing to reduce it. The cul-de-sac itself?
Yeah, so you're landscaping, you're saying removing it, and then you're putting landscaping into it.
I think...
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can zoom in, too, if you wait one second.
That, that outer line, the pavement, see the gray edge? That's the existing...
Oh, your existing pavement to be removed is on site. I see the arrows now. I, I agree with, I thought when...
Is it going the other way?
No, no, no. So, hold on, let me pull up the, let me pull up the aerial. I know what he's saying.
But that's actually the, the, there is some green space there, and that's the right-of-way line.
I think that, I think what he has drawn is what's actually improved. Hold on, I'll pull up the near map. If I, I have a current aerial that I can pull up.
It's on the other side that we're removing the asphalt.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about on your site. Now, I see, I see the arrows when I zoomed in. I saw the writing on the, within the right-of-way, so I thought we were talking, oh, okay. All right. Let me pull up this aerial. This will give you a better idea.
Can you see that?
All right. Hold on one second. Let me get a rezoom share. So, so see, Paula, that the, the actual pavement is what he drew, and this yellow line is the edge of the right-of-way.
That's the right-of-way.
Okay.
So there to, when he said existing pavement to be removed, you were talking about over here and over here.
Talking of the parking spaces are...
Not here.
Correct.
So here, I'll, I'll pull this up again.
You can keep that one up and up. Maybe we can use this drawing to represent...
Yeah.
So, I hope all of you can see it. It's in this area in where we've got existing parking, and we want to landscape that, and we want to use it also for auto display, but we're, we're landscaping that and making that grass for the leaded display area also.
Yeah, so, so you, so the, the problem is, you can't do any work within that, where, where you have within the right-of-way, unless you, unless you can prove that you have the right to, to change it.
Sorry, we're not proposing anything within the right-of-way.
Okay, so that area right now that's paved...
Don't worry about it.
That area right now that's paved, on the south of the yellow line. I'm colorblind, so I hope that's yellow.
It's yellow.
But, yes.
Right there.
Yes, so that, that semicircle that, that's, the same colored pavement as your pavement, even though it's within the right-of-way, that's staying that way?
The only thing we're proposing inside of that yellow line is the granite curbing. I mean, you told me I need to get permission from the four owners of that.
To make any improvement there, it look, apparently, whoever owns it, it looks like you own it jointly. You would need to get permissions to make improvements to it. But in, even, in, within those improvements, making sure that it still meets our requirements for turnaround, so also check with fire. I understand that's what it is now, but just check. We got to check with other city departments on that.
We're not making any changes.
Yeah.
I understand.
The conversation's much different if they're not renovate, if they're not moving anything within that area anyway, meaning if it's already pre-existing and...
Won't you touch it?
The, yeah, I mean, so this is, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back to, I got a screen share here of...
That also may be why it's by two minutes and not granite, if they can roll up and over it.
Yeah, so this is, so this is, so this is the view down towards the site, and this is the Cape Cod berm they're talking about. So, so they, even though, even though this isn't technically the edge of the right-of-way, the edge of the right-of-way is somewhere over back here.
See, there's no, they can run over that right now, right?
Right, that's why they want to do granite curbing there.
I understand, but then fire department can't potentially run over it. That's the issue, like...
No, that isn't the area that the fire department would get involved in. Fire department gets involved in the radius here.
Correct.
And that's what we're not changing. I mean, yeah, we're putting granite, but the intention is not to drive over that. I mean, the intention is for this radius to remain up, you know?
I, I think, I, I understand better now, and I agree with it better. The access for the fire department doesn't change. The, the, what they have as of today, which is giant, if you drive there, it's huge. They don't, that doesn't change. It's just, for whatever reason, when this was developed, and this is a better view, it was, the, the rounding moved in for some weird reason, and, and it's however far, 10 feet from, from the edge of the right-of-way, but this all the way across...
It's around 13 feet.
Yeah, this all the way across is gigantic. I mean, it's a huge turnaround. So the access to the site, the width of the access to the site doesn't change, the turning radius for the fire truck doesn't change, so I'm more comfortable with it now than I was before this meeting started, because I always thought that they were moving that line south, and I didn't notice that the right-of-way has actually always been on the other side of where actually the pavement ends, so...
Yes, but they're proposing to landscape it now.
No, 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 they're not. The only thing he's going to do here is granite curbing right here, right?
Nope, he said landscape up to it.
So, so what's going on?
We're taking away on the other...
Other side.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Let me just try and explain it a little bit. And I'm sorry, I can't show the, oh, but here's the ramp line, okay? And so, you're saying that's all paved?
Yes.
So behind that, that's all paved...
Let's put landscaping.
And we, and so, we would be proposing, and that's where...
It's going to make it look more defined.
That portion, you're saying, we, anything within that right-of-way would need the permission of the rooms.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I don't see that as an option, I, I mean, I don't see that as a problem to move forward, and we'll do what needs to be done to go there. But it's an improvement for this site in relation, and it doesn't affect any of the waters in any way. We're adding the granite along this edge. It will not affect fire and...
According to, according to the GIS, it looks like, I mean, according to, and this is, in this is street scene, according to this aerial, it looks like that road width, the pavement width is 30 feet. Captain Kringan's email said, I will pull it up. I should probably stop sharing here.
I also uploaded it on the...
Yeah, I have, I have them all here.
Yeah.
Captain Kringan said, "Fire department access road shall be an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet," which we have. "The minimum inside turning radius of a fire department access road shall be 25 feet," which it looks like that width is in excess of that. "Fire access, fire apparatus access roads connecting to roadway shall be provided with curb cuts extending at least two feet beyond each edge of the fire apparatus access road." He does say, "It appears the access, the road access in the parking lot shows a width of 18 feet."
In other words, this paved, he's talking about this entrance here?
Yep.
And apparently, that entrance, that is, that's the existing pavement.
Yep, yep.
So that's already in there.
Yep.
We're extending that.
Do you know how wide the top one is? Are they both?
Sorry, top one?
The, the other port, the other access, this access?
It's, it's actually too wide. It's like 40 feet.
Okay.
And we're proposing to reduce that to, to about 30 feet wide.
Okay, so, so, so the access on that right-hand side is going to be 30-ish feet. The left-hand side is how big? 18?
Yeah, well, I think, I think it's 24, actually.
Okay, so if, if you can tell us that it's 24, I'm okay with it.
I want it to be at least 20.
Perfect, okay. If we can come to that agreement, I'm...
It is 24. You told me 18 and I...
Well, it says, so Captain Kringan wrote, "It appears the road access in the parking lot shows a width of 18 feet." That's what he wrote.
All right.
Yeah, I, I don't see a dimension on there, so...
Okay.
We can scale it now, or you can demand that I make it 24. Either way, it will be 20.
I think, I think, I think if you can, as long as you can prove to us that they're a minimum of 24 feet, that way, we don't have any fire department issues. That would be good.
Typically, display cars are not on a landscaped area. And so unless you're proposing some other remarkable landscape use, like you're, you're going to put in like, pavers with grass or something like that, that can take, withstand it, you're not going to, not going to make a mud field or whatever, or run over landscaping with cars on it.
I think there's little...
The intention is that these areas would be necessarily pavers. These are the locations of the company that park cars, and we would provide pavers for access to those locations, and the rest would just be normal grass.
That's what we're talking about, not parking on normal grass.
Correct. I'm sorry. We're proposing that it would be on pavers.
So it's really, you know, really...
It would be on pavers. The display areas would be on pavers, but the area would be grass that would be maintained and mowed.
So what type of materials are you looking at? Are you looking at the pavers that have like the, really, then the grass comes up over it, so you still mow it?
Yes, that's exactly...
It's permeable, so it's less...
Grass. Regular blue and seed would just be, it's either concrete or plastic that would, that would be used for the holding up of the, of the individual paver...
Okay.
To hold the weight of the vehicle.
Okay.
Can I ask a practical question about that?
Yes, sir.
This is not a busy street. This is a street that no one drives down. Why do we need display cars? No one's going to drive down that street.
The owner is a car salesman, and he wants to display his car.
I know, but for no one to see, like, the only people that drive down there are going to be to go to buy a car, so it being parked in the parking lot is no different than it being parked on the sidewalk, the, the...
It's like there, it's really, it's skewed. Even have some pointing in the opposite direction, like of the, of the gym.
It's what the owner would like to have, and I'm trying to give him what he wants. Granite curbing on this street is not something that, you know, it's not a main highway.
Nope.
We usually look for that, but it's a look that he would like to present for the, for the sales area for his vehicle.
So what is it, so explain as well. It says, "Removing concrete," but yet you want to park 15 or 14 display cars on it. So what, what is to occur there? The gray area there, above it.
This area is asphalt right now, okay? And the intent is in...
Further back.
I'm sorry.
This one.
Back here?
Keep going. There, there you go.
Okay. That is a display area with asphalt.
Exactly. Why do you need more display area towards that front?
Displaying a lot of cars here.
That's just put, now, you're not even showing them stacked or anything. You're just saying, here's a block, I'm putting 14 cars.
Yes.
Well, where's the dimensions in showing 14 cars, and now they stacked, and what is, what is this?
Me?
I, I, and then I'm looking at the site plan. Typically, a site plan that says, hey, we have, it's like, we have 107 vehicle spaces, and we're proposing 143. How is that possible? I can't, and I didn't count 143. I couldn't count them all. So if you could count them all, about, it's like where, where you're existing, show me existing 107, show me where the new ones are. And then we also are also looking for, I would say, at least I'm looking for, the outdoor play area, information and fencing and all like that.
That's right, in this area?
Yeah.
What, what do you mean?
Information, like, um, fencing access.
Yes, it has a proposed fence-
Of what?
At one gate on the side here, and then there'll be a side door from the building itself. This area is typically made from, uh, synthetic grass in those areas.
Yes, and you're proposing to make it one-way? It's two-way right, is it two-way right now?
It is a one-way now.
Is it one-way now?
The only thing we're doing is because of this area, we are moving the road slightly, the access drive slightly out, and we're-
Okay.
-widen that strip, so this is the point-
Oh, they access that from a side door of the building?
Yes, the side door.
How wide is it now? Maybe that's the problem Captain Kringan had, that 18-foot-
Oh, that might be the 18 feet.
Because he did mention the 18 feet, maybe he has a problem with that 18-foot width one-way behind the building.
That's, 18 is typical for one-way, certainly.
It says-
That would be the 118 that he's talking about.
I'm just, I'm just reading his email, "It appears the road access in the parking lot shows a width of 18 feet."
Okay.
And then he wrote at the beginning, "Access road shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet. Minimum inside turning radius of the fire department access road shall be 25 feet," which we covered. So I think, I think the fire department's looking for at least 20 feet.
Okay, so if we widen this to 20 feet, everyone would be happy?
I think, I think that that's good, I, I agree with Paul.
That's not our issue.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that, I just wanna make sure the fire department's good, it sounds like that that's, that, that, I thought he was talking about the entrance widths, but you already said your entrance widths are more-
Yeah, 20.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, did you guys ever think, did you guys, out of curiosity, just, did you ever think, oh, I guess this cut through your side, did you ever think of just creating Horseshoe Park Drive the way it was supposed to be? Running your granite-
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah?
This is the right-of-way.
Correct.
Way it was supposed to be, you mean, I don't know which-
Well, the way this was designed is for-
The cul-de-sac.
No, no, no. It wasn't, this is the right-of-way, and within every road, there's a pavement portion that's roughly 13 feet-
Okay.
-that is called the grass strip, sometimes you have sunrooms, and that's the way this was built, with the grass, and it got grass on this side. The pavement width was not supposed to be 50 feet wide.
Yeah, no, I know, I know what you're talking about, I'm very familiar. I'm trying to-
Or that's why I, I'm sorry, I missed the point.
No, 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 so, so, and again, because this, this was supposed to act as a commercial pla- I'm trying to picture, and I wish I had it, and I don't, when we did, when we did the building redesign, I've been on the, I was on the planning board for that, I, I, I don't know, I just, I thought edge of pavement was within that, that area.
The granite line is the edge of pavement.
No, I, I know.
No, I'm trying to explain it to her.
Okay.
And this is the right-of-way, and this is the grass strip between here.
It was not really occupied by our dealership at this time, is it?
That is asphalt, because there-
It's vacant.
This is all paved.
I don't see that with the-
From there to here, and what we're proposing to do is curving along that edge-
But it says, existing concrete to be removed, but then you wanna put display cars on what?
Take it off, then asphalt out, and, and, except for, he wants to have displays of four and five, and I, I, there's more than that.
14 in the middle?
There's 12 there, and then, is it 14?
There's 14 display cars in the middle, 12 display cars on the right, four display cars on the left, and then there's five display cars on the far left of the site, on the other side, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
So, is that building currently vacant? Because I know Vital was there for a while.
I think the brewery right now is the only thing that's in there.
Okay, because the ambulance company was in that particular, ambulance company was here at one point.
Yeah. And a standard before.
Yeah, Gallo standard, yeah.
Oil, oil change, yeah, it was like Midas or something.
Yes, and it was Dollar General, too, the one on the right, yeah, so.
I guess I'm still not comfortable with this parking all of-
Can we just get the cars off that grass area, really? It's that simple. Can we just take them off the grass? You have so much display area, you have 12, you have 16, 21, 31, you have 35 display car spaces on this plan without the, oh, I'm sorry, those four down there. So you have 12, 14, and 5.
The most important thing is to get permission for this use.
Yeah.
If you give me permission, I'll get those.
Oh, I don't, I don't think, I don't think anyone's gonna have a problem with the use.
Oh, I know, I need to come away with that use.
Okay.
That use tonight, so here's a-
Can I summarize this? Can we just do, widen that 18-foot access in the rear to 20?
Yeah.
Just take the, the, the display cars off the grass area? It just getting, it just confuses the whole thing, and pardon the pump, but it muddies everything, it's just because that's what's gonna end up happening. And then if you can prove that you have a right to do the granite curving in Horseshoe Drive, I don't think I care.
What are you, you says removing concrete, what are you gonna replace it with and then do display? It says existing concrete to be removed.
This says existing concrete pad, in other words, you see this line right here?
Yeah.
That's the existing concrete.
To be replaced with, just pavement?
Yeah, that, do we have the landscaping plan?
Paul, if you look up there, you can see the concrete right here, it kinda goes over like this.
Yes, I do see that, so, but my question was, what do you do, replacing it with, and then-
Can you show the landscaping plan that might give us a better opinion?
Okay. I think we can concentrate on those other aspects, remove, other piece, I mean, this is my opinion, we can bring this up to the, um, board member, on the board.
So I have site plan?
And you can always come back to modify it for the-
So I have color narrative, I have site plan, is it in the application package, maybe?
It should be, it should be on there, Paul, I, I, let's see, which one is it?
Layout.
It's the cup-
Oh, actually, summary landscape, I'm sorry. Okay, there you go.
There you go.
And I didn't say what to do.
It's blank, it's blank on that one, too.
I, I'm saying that there's a landscaping area around the outside perimeter, and it's asphalt in the middle of that proposed display area.
I think you can work, you should afterwards go back and rework what your display area to maybe work with the rounding a little bit better for display cars around the radius, something, I don't know, whatever you can fit, and better, and not be on the landscaping, outside of the landscaping.
Okay.
You want to look for additional display area closer to the landscaping, it's not on it. I, I totally like the idea of improving the landscaping and putting low shrubs and mulch and whatever it is in the, along the, the front edge, and then you have-
I, I guess, uh, we're-
Vehicles to that, but.
You just, I mean, those are currently, if we go back, if we go back, let's see, does it show?
The existing?
Yes, underneath, you see the existing-
Yep.
Display areas that are in there now, around the perimeter in here.
Yes.
And we were trying to make it-
Like a deeper landscaped area?
Yeah, and, and that's what we were trying to do, and then still have the display area.
Why don't you, how about, as Paul mentioned, if we focus on your plan for the other aspect of that, if we say, in the board agreement, remove the cars off the landscaping, you can always come back, show us maybe some better depictions of things about what you like to do and materials and how this could look.
Sure. That way we can get your, your, the, the use you want, use, you, you want up and running.
Up and running.
And if we wanna revisit that in the future, show us what you're gonna do with the land, with the parking on the landscaping, but for now, let's just leave it off the site plan so we can approve it.
Can I make an appointment for that meeting on the 17th?
Oh, so is he-
To revise it?
So I guess my question might be bigger, is, they, they definitively have a plan for a car? It sounded like, it sounded like this was kinda like planning for the future of-
Yeah.
-maybe having a car.
I don't think he'd be spending all this money if he didn't have a real plan on putting some kind of a car place in there. I mean, he, this granite curving is not inexpensive, as you know.
Yeah.
And it's only a look, and you want, he's trying to get a look, he wants a look, more than you guys do, really.
Yeah.
I do have the approved street plan, for what it's worth, in front of me, and it's a 20-foot right-of, it's a 20-foot paved area on a 50-foot right-of-way, and it's listed as private on the, on the, the, the plan that went to DPW however many years ago. This is before any of those buildings were there, other than the 99, so, this is for what it's worth.
The scale on this plan is 1 inch equals 30 feet, so I would say that that part, that-
It's about 30, I, yeah, it's about 30, I scaled it on the, the aerial, so.
Here's a, I'm just thinking logistics, and maybe Chantel can help with this. He's, you, you wanna come back as soon as next month for that?
Yeah, I, the ABA would be given up on anything.
The, the ABA use needs this yesterday.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what kind of vehicles or what type of vehicles the owner is planning on displaying on the lot?
I don't.
Not sure? New, used?
Both.
Both, yeah.
Electric, non-electric.
So, so because, because we-
But I'm checking, I gotta think of, well, just wanna talk about the logistics of this, because if they're seeking the change of use now, I don't think the decision would be even written before the next meeting. Aspect for that. Where we, then we'd modify it. If we granted it tonight, we'd be modifying it the next meeting, which still can be possible. And then-
It could be two separate applications, you know, because it's two separate uses in the same-
Well, we get our modify, we gotta approve the site plan-
Right.
-here, so, and then he just wants to modify the site plan after, so.
It doesn't have to be on the 17th, that was just-
No, 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 I, I think what Paul is trying to say is, we wanna get this, this other use shouldn't be impacted by-
Right.
-issues kinda that are created by the car dealership.
Right.
So, you know, can, can, can we approve it, and Chantel tell the building commissioner that it, that the use, that the actual approval was done, so that they can grant whatever occupancy they need for the therapy company, and we can, and we can, we can finalize the site plan, we can approve it based upon revisions, and then approve the revisions at the next one's meeting.
When do you think, here's another question, where's the, where's the build-out for this, aspects of all these changes, and when, what's the build-out timeline for the educational use?
I, I don't know that, but they, they wanted to be sure that they could get going forward.
Oh, okay, so it's not like, so there is still some time, but-
So, so with the under, so if you tell your, your client that, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I think the board can speak for themselves, me individually, and I think most of us have said, that the use itself isn't a problem.
No.
If, if you could tell them that, and we can just iron it out in December-
If the change of use is triggering the site plan, so we have-
Right, if we can iron it out December 17th, is that a problem, do you think, timeframe-wise?
I don't know.
Okay. Whatever you wanna do, Paul.
Because we have to, we can't approve this plan anyway, you have to submit a modification because it's from 18 to 20 feet minimally, that has to be done.
Can we make it a separate?
Mark Wagner has his hand raised.
Oh, great.
There you go.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Wagner.
My wife just has to unmute.
Uh, we can't hear you, but it looks like his microphone's unmuted.
Am I all right?
There we go.
There you are, fantastic.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's time tonight, thank you. And I, and I've been, I've been trying to connect with you, I apologize, I, I couldn't be there tonight. I do have my father on the phone, too, so we've been talking, but-
Okay.
So we, I appreciate you folks trying to push this along, we would try, we would love to somehow make this all work so we could push forward with the ABA usage, I know there was a couple, you know, hang-ups with the, on the gra, you know, which we'd be happy to come back later on that, and, and, you know, modify that, so if we could try to push forward with whatever you needed to get this through, you know, my father has lined up some landscaping, we were trying to get that done, you know, a little bit before the winter, just in the front and, and on the sides, and, and, you know, in the back for the, the brewery, so we, we were trying to do some improvements, so whatever we could try and do and modify, we'd, we'd appreciate some consideration tonight.
So, Paul, can I have a suggestion? Because-
Go ahead.
Nothing on that plan is contentious or something that the city couldn't live with. If we approve that plan with-
Submit modification, submit a modified plan with-
Approve that plan, subject to providing modification, meaning we say, that's the plan for now, but come back with modifications next month, that way they can move forward with the current use, and we, we, I mean, we could even, if you wanted, we could even say, that plan's okay, provided that rear access is 20 feet wide, and you don't park cars on that landscaped area. And I think that kinda, and then, we can iron out the car dealership stuff next month if we want, and, but I think that is-
Yeah, and then get, and then submit, submit revised site plan showing the 20-feet width, access width, and the cars not parked. Any other modification you want us to contemplate in that regard? And then you'll also get the, any permissions that you need in order to do work within the-
Well, I think the good thing about the, the right-of-way is, even if we approve that, if they, if they do the granite, we're not authorizing them to do the granite, they still need permission to do it and to solve their problem.
Yeah, but we wanna make it clear, we're not authorizing it to be done on someone else's property.
Right, what I'm saying is, they would need that permission anyway.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Tracy, I would like to just say, my, my dad has gone around all the, abouters, has talked to them about that particular, I mean, we certainly, we'd be happy to get in writing and do the, you know, the formal, but they are all on board and, and feel comfortable with it, with that, with that type of improvement, but we can solidify that and, you know, make sure we get that, you know, in writing from everybody.
Okay.
Mark, to what one of our board members asked, is, is this your car company that's going there?
Uh, we, again, we were just hoping to maintain kind of the spirit of that original building, you know, with it being the, the original Gallo place in the old Saturn store, so we were just, you know, our, our real motivation is obviously the front, the ABA, and, and then, you know, maintaining a little of that, you know, the, you have, still have the service facility in the middle of that building, and-
So you're just planning for the future? It's not actually a car dealership that's going there?
Right.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we, we have two stores down in Shrewsbury, you know, I don't know if you're familiar, but, you know, we have the Kia and the Mercedes-Benz store, you know, so it's our business, and, you know, we've been 60-plus years, and-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so we would, you know, hopefully, you know, just like to preserve that character up there with that building.
Yeah, no problem, we don't, I don't think the, the use isn't a problem, it's just, just ironing out details.
Yeah, well, it's the, it's, we're not approving the use per se-
I know, I know.
It's just the use is triggering the site plan review, and we're looking for, making sure it meets parking, landscaping, lighting, where's your snow storage areas scenario, but, um, so, I guess predominantly on this plan, we would be seeking a, a modified plan, though, of the, showing 18 to 20 feet, 24-foot widths on the other access road minimum pieces, no parking on the, the proposed and landscaped areas, at least display cars.
Mm-hmm.
Unless you seek other modification, and we agree materials and whatnot, and layout.
Is there anyone sitting behind you? There's no one in the, in the audience?
There was a man over there.
I, I only ask because there's no one, there's no one in attendance virtually, other than Mark, and there's no one seated down, so you can take public comment, but we won't have any.
We would reduce, reduce the, the number on the narrative, what you said, proposing 143, so would we, that be reduced by the requisite, that, the parking that's on the landscaped areas?
I just wanna mention one thing about the project, it sounds, after listening to the, the presentation, it appears to me that the owners of the property are really interested in making the property-
Yeah.
-look really nice, and they want, they're gonna really take, take care of it and make it appealing. I, I don't want you to leave this meeting thinking that your original ideas are dead. And what I, what I mean by that is, I can appreciate the owner wanting to display cars, and it appears to me that he really is interested in displaying them nicely, in something unique. So even though I think the majority of the board-
Not familiar with it.
-may not like the idea of parking on landscaping, if the landscaping involves a type of material that is, you know, half and half, I can, I can appreciate that look.
I guess what, the point I was trying to make, and I'm not sure that I made it, is the area that we're proposing to put these cars on is currently paved.
Right.
So why wouldn't it be an improvement if we make it blue and seed with these, with these things? So that is, that was the only other point I was trying to make.
So the owner has an idea, a look in his mind that he would like to present, and it's, it's not a dead issue. I kinda like the idea of displaying a car, a little different than another dealership, gives it a little more appeal, so I'm, I'm not totally against that at all.
I concur, it was just that we're not, seeing it, we don't really have any materials or views or, you know, to, at this time, and rather than hold this project up, we would look at it just without it, and then you could come back and show your point.
I just had a guy before me.
So, it, it, let's, let's do that. So it, it, let's, let's do that.
Board in agreement, anybody have any questions about that, or?
Nope.
Okay.
Do you want to make a show and ask for public comment?
Do you have any questions, Mr. Wagner?
No, thank you, I do appreciate everyone's work on this tonight, thank you.
Yeah, we, we want to see you move ahead with it too, we would love to see it occupied and landscaping updated, and this is where all about this motion.
And there's a great brewery there too, by the way, which we always joked with him about, we, when, when the Dollar General closed, we wanted him in the front building, and that obviously never happened, but I hear they're successful and it's a good place.
Yeah, they're doing great over there, yeah, they, nice, nice family business.
Yeah.
Very proud.
Yep.
Great. All right, that being said, is there any public comment?
No.
There's nobody in the audience here?
There's no one virtual either.
And no one virtual, so.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion's been made?
Second.
With the second, the close the hearing, all those in favor, roll call vote, say aye. All those opposed, say opposed. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Paula, aye, and discussion?
Make a motion to approve the site plan for two sixty-five Summer Street, just subject to modifying the, the site plan to provide a twenty-foot minimum access, access aisle, and no cars on the landscaped areas.
And minimum twenty-four foot width on the other access driveway?
Yeah, when you revise the plan, just show the widths of your two entrances.
Absolutely.
Perfect. You'll have a, you'll have the scale out anyway, you can do it quick.
Oh, and we typically put a, like, on a, typically there's like a year to begin work, and then like two year to complete work. Okay, I like that.
Perfect.
All right, that motion, that form of motion, and then the second by Tracy, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Amanda?
Aye.
Paula? Oh, I usually go, I usually go Peter.
You can vote.
Aye. Peter?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Got everybody, take them out of order. All right.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you, thank you for sitting through this evening. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yep, I know.
All right, we have on our agenda this evening, there was a communication about Apotheca cessation of cannabis operations.
Yeah, so this is the old Chem Design Site, this is the end of Development Road, it was one of our, it was towards the beginning of our approvals.
Yeah.
And it was also, it's, it's quite a site, it's like, there's buildings everywhere on that property, it, anyway.
It was, it was not retail, it was just manufacturing and grow, grow that establishment, so we have been duly informed.
Yeah, they're closing, yep.
And I guess we would ask, we would probably have to follow up with some counsel about, you know, what that means for any other permit or anything, it's not retail, so it's just going to be.
I would venture a guess that one of our permit conditions would automatically make the permit void.
I think it does.
Such, such so that, yeah, if you're not in operation, yeah, so.
Then it does that.
But.
Isn't great to say the meeting was going to be next one?
Next, the City Hall Building next door, third floor.
Third floor. And then we have a waterways application, repair of stone arch bridge at West Minister Hill Road as a communication. If, if anything, you want to speak to any of these, Chantel, feel free.
Yeah, at this time, they're asking for public comment on those particular plans. So I, I did upload the plans, if, if anyone wants to look at them, they are in the document center.
Yeah, not, not necessarily planning board comment, but just open for public comment.
Open for public comment, correct.
I'm sure no one knows it better than Amanda, so.
Long overdue.
I'm going to, it's like, it's like, see it, here we go.
I'm interested to watch it all happen, yeah.
Yes, because I think, I think there might be some pavement after that work, so it's been waiting, this has been waiting to get done first.
Oh, man, well, Sandborne Street needs.
Oh, yeah, especially that side, the.
Yeah, yeah, but it's actually not, it's all right, it's just, it's, you know, the trucks don't obey that sign at all, there are tractor-trailer trucks driving over that bridge daily, yeah. So it'll be good when it's fixed and we'll be able to go two cars, again, I forget what that's like.
Yeah, no kidding, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and, and another communication, I know it's not here, but was it a week ago? The city council had their first reading of the three A MBTA zoning amendment.
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. So a couple more readings, and it should be solidified by the end of the year, which was the state deadline. So on track, on track with that. Underneath other business, we have our meeting dates for 2025 and filing deadlines. Fantastic. We usually have our two meetings in January, CDPG.
Do we have, did we check, Chantel, about any elections that might get in the way?
Well, I.
We have a municipal election next year.
I know we do, and I think the first year I started to work here, the issue was, is that we had early voting, but I'm not sure if that's going to disrupt us having a meeting, I can.
I think they solved it this year because they did early voting in City Hall.
Right.
Because last, because two, yeah, two years ago, they did it in this room.
Yes.
And you couldn't meet here for like six weeks.
Right.
So.
So we may be able to use this room, I can, I can double check with the city clerk, I think that's at the September meeting, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I don't think they do the schedule until January, right, the election schedule?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't see it, all I know is that I did.
So our December meeting obviously has to move, that's two days before Christmas.
That's fine.
Yes.
We, we obviously have to move that. Our November meeting is going to be the same as today, two days before Thanksgiving, which I suppose it worked out fine today, but most people were here. I can't see any holidays out of those, at least in my head, if anyone else does, but December, we, we should change December, same way we did this week, I, I hate doing it the week before, but we have to, but the week before, you only have a week, not even a week, before you meet the filing deadline.
Mm-hmm, it makes it a little difficult, yeah.
But it, I mean, but the, the other alternative is, we push it till January.
Right.
Or the, the last week of December, January, and then we have three meetings in three weeks, so three meetings in four weeks.
Correct, yeah.
But.
Yeah, I would say move December the week forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Like this one.
So that's.
See how this goes, we can always, we have plenty, we have a year to make a change.
Yeah.
That's what it is, you know?
Yeah, so that would be the sixteenth next year.
Okay.
I mean, I keep getting recommendations for that we should take a month off in, in the summertime, but we have it, we've been good.
We should take a month off.
Some other boards do.
But sometimes we should meet twice.
You're right, that's the hard part, is, you, it's, you, but you've been on it long enough, it's unpredictable, like.
Oh, I know.
When we, when we realize we have, like, this, this meeting, we realize we have to meet twice, it's the week before the meeting, and so we look at the agenda like, oh, man, we can't fit all that in.
Yeah.
And then you can't get everyone together for, you know, a meeting that quickly, so.
Right.
This was like nine hearings in.
I know, I, I know, I'm surprised.
It would have been twelve.
And there would have been even more, because we actually moved.
No, this is good.
So it was, there was a lot. And then what else? I want to let the board know that also as part of the three A amendments that we're working to try to put together update to the planning board rules and regulations, and the next step too is also be incorporating a new fee structure, fees, fees in with that too, so, but the rules and reg.
Are we supposed to adopt our revised rules and regs by July, by January first? I only ask because it was part of the packet that we gave to the council.
I, I don't think so.
No, I think it's not, not necessary.
I have just a question, I.
No, I would say it's not, it's not vital, it's not.
Well, because we won't have time.
We won't have, no, correct, correct.
There's no way.
In regards to that, it's pretty much just a, I mean, just like a reference point, it's just reference.
You know what's a good suggestion? Hear me out here, we tack it on to the end of the CD, CDPG meeting, because last year that was only like an hour and a half.
It depends how much we can get together on that.
Okay, well, I think by the second, second, third week of January.
Show you your draft.
You and I can have, you already did some of it.
There's a, there's a lot of space that needs to go into it, actually.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I'm well aware, all right, well.
So we should, because the rules and regs, we can modify them by a majority vote of